Chairman Sernick.
Here.
Commissioner Boone.
Here.
Commissioner Goldberg.
Here.
Commissioner Height. Commissioner Honoron.
Here.
Commissioner Pollan.
Here.
Commissioner Teta.
Here.
Chairman, you have a quorum.
Great, thank you, Jane. Okay, um. Anyone wishing to speak during public invited to be heard, which is items four and seven, so not the agenda items, but the public invited to be heard section. I just lost my script. Hang on. Anybody wishing to speak during public invited to be heard, items four and seven, or during any public hearing items, um, will need to watch the live stream of the meeting for instructions about how to call in to provide public comment at the appropriate times. Instructions will be given during the meeting and displayed on the screen when it is time to call in to provide comments. Comments are limited to five minutes per person, and each speaker will be asked to state their name and address for the record prior to proceeding with their comments. Please remember to mute the live stream when you're called upon to speak. Next on our agenda is communications from Planning Director Glenn Van Nimwegen.
Hi Commissioners, thanks again for spending your quality time with us tonight. Um, I just wanted to introduce Hannah Mulroy, who is um, our environmental and sustainability planner. I think this is our first planning commission meeting. Um, so I'd just like to welcome her. She comes to us from Wisconsin. Um, she was a planner with Lake County, Illinois, which is a county, um, I believe just north of Chicago, about 700,000 folks. Um, she was really handling current planning issues, but um, um, really worked in the environmental sustainability area and was the first um, sustainability program manager appointed um, in Lake County. So she is here with a cast of a thousand backing up Ava on the uh, Rivertown project. So I'd at least like to have Hannah at least say hello.
Hello, everyone. I'm very glad to be here. Thank you very much, Glenn, for that nice introduction, and I'm looking forward to working with you all.
Great, thank you, Hannah. Great to have you here. Thanks so much. Um, thank you, Glenn. Anything else, Glenn?
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, next on our agenda is uh, public comment. So this is public invited to be heard. Um, not for uh, any items that are on the agenda. Anything else? Anything else you'd like to talk to the commission about? So we're displaying the information. And it's on your screen now. Uh, please dial 1-888-788-0099. When prompted, enter the meeting ID 828-8365-3145. When we're ready to hear public comment, we'll call on you to speak based on the last three digits of your phone number. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record, and will be allowed five minutes to speak. Please remember to mute the live stream when you're called upon to speak. Otherwise, it does what we had just for the last 10 minutes. We will take a five-minute break to do this, uh, because it does take time to get people into the meeting if they call in. Again, a reminder, this is for anything that is not on the agenda tonight. None of the projects that are on the agenda. It's about anything else. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. We'll be back at 7:21.
All right, Chair, I'm gonna drop the slide, and then we'll wait for the live stream to get caught up. All right, looks like we are caught up on the live stream, and we have no callers this evening.
Okay, thank you, Susan. So seeing no one for uh, the public invited to be heard, we will close that. We'll move on to item five on our agenda, which is approval of our July 2021, 2021 minutes, and approval of the electronic participation policy, which I expect we'll have some discussion about as well. Um, how about Commissioners, if we take the, handle the minutes first, and then get into the electronic participation policy. But first, let's take Commissioner Height's question.
What's the question? I was going to propose exactly what you just proposed, because to bifurcate them, um, and I would motion approve the charge for the first 2021 minutes.
Okay, any uh, discussion about the minutes, Commissioner Pollan? Or a motion to second?
A motion to second the approval.
Okay, so we have a motion to agree by Commissioner Height, and a second on that motion by Commissioner Pollan. Any further discussion about the minutes? Seeing none, let's take a, we need to do a roll call vote. Um, I'll just do it in the order I see you. Uh, Commissioner Height?
Yes.
Commissioner Boone?
Abstaining.
Okay, Commissioner Honoron?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Teta?
Yes.
Commissioner Pollan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Um, so Jane, the minutes are approved on 601 with Commissioner Boone abstaining because she was not present at the meeting. Um, so now we will discuss the um, the electronic participation policy, and I would like to kick it off with a question to City Attorney Tate. In reading it in item two, A, um, the paragraph, "The Border Commission determines that meeting online is warranted for good cause. Good cause may include, but is not limited to, a public health emergency, a finding that online meetings increase access and participation, significant inclement weather, or the inability to assemble a quorum in person." If I'm reading this right, our ability to do this tonight, if we accept this policy as written, is based on that last phrase, "The inability to assemble a quorum in person." Am I correct about that? Is that what we're operating under?
Uh, Chair Sharnak, certainly that would fall under that that classification. However, um, the commission could also find a different basis for good cause. For example, um, a surge in in COVID. If if the commission made such a finding that a surge in COVID constitutes good cause, that would also be appropriate. This is drafted to give the commission some flexibility.
Okay, so so the uh, so that first sentence, um, we could discuss what good cause means, and as you said, make a finding that there is something outside of that list that qualifies as good cause.
Yes, Chair, that's correct.
Okay. Um, let me pose it out to the commission, Commissioner Pollan. I mean, you know, what do we think is good cause?
Yeah, as an example, would we, when do we find the cause? Do we find it before the meeting, or do we state it during the meeting?
Is that a question for Teresa Tate?
Yes, that's a question for for Teresa.
Um, Chair Sharnak, um, Commissioner Pollan, if I understood correctly, the discussion last month, it it seems to me that this commission considered um, making something that would be a good cause finding through the end of this year. So you would not have to do it on a case-by-case basis for each meeting. You could do it for a defined period of time. That would be acceptable. Um, you could do it also on a case-by-case basis. My recommendation would be that you did that, that you do that at the meeting, immediately preceding the meeting that you plan to have um, a virtual meeting. Does that make sense?
It it does, except Teresa, my one thing would be inclement weather is something we wouldn't know a week ahead of, or a month ahead of time. That would be something that would probably occur a day. So I just want to make sure we have something in play to say that we were planning to be here, but because of conditions, we had to do it remotely, and and that that would be okay to do a last-second change like that.
Understood. Yes, I understand your question. So under the Colorado Open Meetings law, um, for this commission to convene and take a vote, typically would require 24 hours' notice. In the event of an emergency, I believe the Open Meetings law contemplates um, as much notice as is possible. So in the event that we had inclement weather, what we could do um, is work with our very able liaison Jane to notice a meeting um, very quickly, and that could, that could even be um, a very quick electronic meeting to take a vote about whether good cause is found or not.
Commissioner Height?
Um, yeah, I agree with both of those comments. Um, one, whether or not um, we've already made the determination for this meeting to um, participate electronically, I think we did that last month. More or less at the end of the year, based upon good cause being, you know, COVID just really isn't fully under control. Um, so I think we have good, we have good cause through the end of the year. I also was gonna suggest, um, like Commissioner Pollan had identified, that we make this determination um, sometime in advance. Possibly, we can identify in to be a certain number of days and or, well, and to provide for um, exigent circumstances, for instance, you know, a snowstorm or some other weather-related circumstance that prevents us from from meeting. Um, and like Teresa was saying, like Attorney Tate was saying, we probably should have a policy or procedure by which we can call and have that meeting for exigent circumstances to make the determination.
So Commissioner Height, are you suggesting that this policy needs to be reworded?
Yeah, um, I apologize, because I didn't really know how to um, share my edits. I kind of edit everything, um, including letters from my mom. Um, but I do have an awful lot of edits to this particular document that um, I'd love to share with everybody. I was going to share them with Attorney Tate, um, but I think, I thought we would just discuss them. It's probably unwieldy to discuss all the comments that I have, but I'm happy to do so if you want.
So question for City Attorney Tate again. Um, given what Commissioner Height just said, that he has a number of edits slash concerns, um, can we move forward with tonight's meeting with the policy as written? With the finding having been made at the last meeting, that we needed to hold this meeting electronically tonight? And could we uh, find a procedure in which Commissioner Height could provide the commission his suggestions and edits? Not right now, but in some other format, so that we could review those and maybe have it all approved before the next meeting?
Chair Sharnak, I would recommend that um, rather than operating outside of the current adopted policy, that you all do adopt some sort of policy tonight, so that we do not um, have any procedural issues with decisions that are made tonight. Um, and then I would recommend that um, that Commissioner Height send his um, his proposed um, amendments, we will call them, perhaps, uh, to Jane, and Jane could distribute those to the commission in advance of the next meeting. Um, and you all could certainly at that, sorry, puppy, um, you all could certainly um, at that meeting, uh, take under consideration whether to amend the policy that that it that would be adopted tonight.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Pollan?
Yeah, uh, in looking at 2G, which says that, um, let me go over to it real quickly here. Uh, to uh, to the extent possible, full and timely notice is given to the public. Um, I believe that at least for the short term, that should cover us for this meeting, and for allow us to have the next meeting, and that I believe at the next meeting, then we can, uh, everybody can prepare their thoughts, and we can have a fuller discussion on this.
So, um, let me, let's do this by motion. Uh, I'll put forward a motion that um, that we accept the electronic participation policy during the City of Longmont Board and Commission meetings document. Um, oh, Commissioner Pollan?
And I'll second that.
Okay, all right. Um, further discussion? Okay, let's take a voice vote. Commissioner Height, oh, Commissioner Pollan?
I was just gonna say, we need to make sure then that this appears on the calendar at our next meeting for our more in-depth discussion.
Right, uh, I believe, uh, given what Attorney Tate said, uh, Jane would be handling that procedure.
Just wanna make sure it's on the book.
Right, right, I agree.
Hey, before, before we go, I got one more question. Attorney Tate, how is it that we are participating, you know, in for the last year this way?
Um, Chair Sharnak, Commissioner Height, you all adopted an interim policy. That interim policy permitted electronic participation during a declared emergency. There was a declared emergency until approximately a month ago. Um, at that time, the city manager withdrew that declaration, and so that's why the commission now has to adopt something else if it plans to remain, uh, if it wants to have the option for meetings to remain virtual.
Understood, appreciate that. Thank you.
Any more questions or discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. Uh, Commissioner Height?
Aye.
Commissioner Boone?
Aye.
Commissioner Honoron?
Aye.
Commissioner Teta?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Pollan?
Aye, yes, for.
Um, and I will say yes as well, and uh, Jane, that passes seven to zero uh, unanimously. So we have accepted um, our new electronic participation policy during City of Longmont Board and Commission meetings policy. Um, okay, next item on our agenda is our public hearing items. First is item six A, the Rivertown Annexation Zoning and Concept Plan. And Ava, I believe you're presenting all of these, right?
I am indeed, Chair. So bear with me tonight. It's gonna be a long night.
Okay, all right, well, take it away, Ava.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, um, Commissioner Honoron needs to jump in real fast.
Yeah, uh, I have a disclosure. The applicant is a client of mine. I'm working with them in another project, uh, not in Longmont. Uh, however, I have no prior information about this particular application. I received the package as you did the rest of the commissioners few days ago.
Thank you, Commissioner Honoron. Appreciate that. Ava, please take us through it.
Thank you, Chair Sharnak and Commissioners. Uh, Ava Pejewski, Planning and Development Services. Uh, again, this first item is uh, the Rivertown Annexation. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna walk you through the background. As you know, um, how this works, I'll walk you through the nuts and bolts, uh, the the development code issues, and then we'll turn it over to the applicant. Uh, but uh, for the good of the group, um, again, this uh, red box here uh, is the project, or the, not the project, the property. Its address is 21 South Sunset. It is on the west side of Sunset Street, uh, just north of Boston Avenue. That's about 21 acres, and it's currently located in unincorporated Boulder County, uh, and it's zoned um, general industrial. And as you can see, uh, the St. Brain Creek borders it on its north side. Uh, there's uh, also on the south, the properties to the south of it along Boston Avenue are all part of the city, or in the city of Longmont. They're all zoned primary employment. Um, the property to the west is Rogers Grove. It's a publicly zoned property. It's a city facility. Um, to directly to the east of, across the street on Sunset, uh, there's a construction, storage facility. Uh, that's not in the city. That's in unincorporated Boulder County, also general industrial. And then, as most of you may recall, you all recently uh, recommended approval, and then it eventually did get annexed of the Riverside Annexation. That would be at the northeast corner of Boston and Sunset, that little six-acre piece there. Um, and so uh, this property is designated in the Envision Longmont Comprehensive Plan as mixed-use employment. Next slide, please. And so uh, this is the concept plan that the applicant proposes. Uh, again, they're proposing to annex it with a zoning of mixed-use employment, which is consistent with our comprehensive plan designation. Uh, as you can see from the plan here, on the right side, the yellow box, that's the east side. They're proposing uh, 20,000 square feet of commercial there on the east side. And then that green triangle on the north is um, about a half acre of amenities. Uh, that's not been completely fleshed out. It's just labeled as amenities, uh, but it's green. Uh, we'll let the applicant explain that to you. I presume it's some type of open space amenity. And then the blue in the center uh, would comprise of some sort of multifamily residential and townhome on the very west side of budding uh, Rogers Grove, about a 380-unit apartment complex and some townhomes. Um, and then the applicant proposes in this concept plan that primary access come from its current uh, entrance on Sunset Street, but that there be uh, some secondary accesses from Boston Avenue. Um, there are some platted easements with a subdivision plat for these properties down here. Uh, there's a Shell gas station there at the northwest corner uh, of Boston and Sunset, and on its west side where the arrow is, uh, there's currently a platted access easement. Uh, similarly, there then there's the gymnastics school to the west of that, and then to the west of that, um, are some more commercial uh, multi-tenant buildings, and there is a platted access easement there, uh, which is how the applicant came to this uh, concept plan. Um, and other things, let's see, these proposed uses, it's the residential and the commercial uses. Those are considered as secondary uses in the mixed-use employment zone. Um, it was in your staff report. I don't have it in here, um, but when we consider secondary uses um, in our zoning regulations, we typically take the aggregate. We don't do it on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So if you look at the whole mixed-use employment zoning in this general area, which to the east of this property includes, you know, the left-hand brewing factory and so forth, um, then this proposal would be considered a secondary use in this zone. Next slide, please. Uh, just a little bit of background here. Um, so again, um, it's it's got some adjacency to the creek. It's the creek of Butson on the north side. Um, the property owner would be required to dedicate land for channel widening um, for the resilient St. Brain Control Project. Um, and in addition, and this is again, all at time of development application, not at annexation, um, but we do have some uh, language in a annexation agreement that council would look at that discusses these items. Um, but in addition, the property owner would be required to dedicate Greenway to improve our St. Brain Greenway there. Uh, again, uh, this property is in a floodway, would require a cl- clomer, um, conditional letter of map revision from FEMA before any type of development could be permitted, so this is further down the road. Uh, and so we did receive a phase one and a phase two uh, environmental site assessment. The property has historically been a gravel mine and a concrete batch plant. Uh, both phase one, phase two found no evidence of um, REC's, and uh, the fire department um, had no concerns uh, about the reports. The reports didn't have any mitigation measures recommended. Therefore, uh, staff didn't have any recommended mitigation measures in the staff report. Next slide, please. Uh, in terms of traffic, um, hold on, I wanna move this box here. Sorry. It's uh, there's a box here that is blocking my slide. Thank you. Okay. There's a traffic study that was completed. It was in your packet, um, and based on um, the potential buildout of 20,000 square feet of commercial and 334 units, it feels uh, that the weekday trips would be about 3,400 vehicular trips daily, uh, weekday. And um, the traffic study concludes that uh, the projected traffic wouldn't change the level of service at Boston and Sunset, uh, regardless of whether anything was ever built here or not. Uh, and then um, they say in the traffic report that if this development is uh, goes through, a couple of tra- traffic mitigation measures uh, would be a left-turn lane on northbound Sunset coming into the property, and the traffic study felt that there was no need for a right-turn deceleration lane uh, for southbound Sunset uh, due to the volume of traffic. And um, a species and habitat report was also submitted, uh, and the report concluded that the site has no habitat for federal or state-protected species and plants. Um, the creek does not provide riparian habitat suitable for those species. There is an eagle's nest nearby, uh, but they have no habitat at this location. Um, and of course, um, if development were proposed, if the property is annexed, uh, the city would require a 150-foot riparian setback from the edge of the creek. Uh, next slide, please. Um, and then just, so for the community outreach, uh, we had a neighborhood meeting in November of 2020. Uh, we got, uh, I think, two phone calls. It was a virtual meeting. Uh, one was in support of the annexation. Uh, one call was concerned about the density and the impacts to the community. Uh, and then in January, uh, the applicant filed a formal application, and we sent out a notice of application. Uh, I received four comment letters. Um, they were mostly uh, supporting that we protect the riparian habitat along the creek, And thusly were opposed to any annexation and subsequent development. And lastly, we had sent out a notice of public hearing in August third. I'm sorry, this is an older version of my PowerPoint, obviously, because today, of course. On the eve of your meeting, I received fifteen letters via email this afternoon, which I know that Jane forwarded to you. So disregard these these last couple bullet points, but somewhere in support, somewhere in opposition. Mostly it was floodway density, but mostly it was environmental concerns about the riparian habitat. Next slide, please. Also, staff's recommending P Planning and Zoning Commission Resolution twenty twenty one dash seven A, recommending approval. Because of the review criteria being met. We will then take this to city council. Dates should still be to be determined. We have to work through the annexation agreement before I can schedule those dates, so stay tuned on that. And with that, next slide, I would just like to introduce our team here tonight from the city staff. Before I turn this over to the applicant for their presentation. But I would like to introduce, we do have Chris Huffer from Public Works Engineering. Cameron Fauks, who's co-project managing this with me from Public Works Engineering. And Caroline Michael from Traffic Engineering. She's happy to answer any questions you have about the traffic study. Or the access points that are proposed. We have Hannah Mulroy that you just met tonight. She's our Environmental Sustainability Planner. She's happy to answer any questions about the Species and Habitat Report. In addition, we have Jim Crick from Natural Resources, who is our, I believe, our staff biologist. Who reviewed the Species and Habitat Report as well. So we welcome any questions you may have after the applicant's presentation. And with that, I will turn it over to the applicant. I'm not sure which one of you guys is presenting, if it's David. But I think we could queue up the next slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Ava.
So if you could turn your cameras on, whoever's next to present. There you go. You should be able to unmute now. David?
Yes, I'm here.
Are perfect. And let me open your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. David Starnes with the Rivertown Longmont Development Group. We're gonna provide a brief presentation about our proposed concept, and I would thank Ava for the details provided previously. And we look forward to having a discussion with Commissioners about moving this project forward. And really adding a high quality mixed use community to Longmont. Next slide, please. As Ava mentioned, this site currently is in the county. It's a former concrete batch plant, the Golden Property, so it's industrial in nature. It's blighted. The commercial uses there are not in great shape. So we look forward to providing a mixed use community that will be a great asset to Longmont. The current zoning is general industrial. Our proposed land use and zoning designation is mixed use employment, which is consistent with the Envision Longmont Complan. Next slide, please. As mentioned, this site is located with within the Saint Brain Creek Corridor Focus Area. This is one of four areas identified in the city's Envision Longmont Camp Complan. As opportunities to accommodate future development, the greatest opportunity to accommodate future development. Our goal and the goal identified in the Complan is revitalization of uses along the Saint Brain Greenway is encouraged. As improvements to the floodway are implemented and future risks are mitigated. And we understand the city's working through Resilience Saint Brain, and we look forward to, you know, having our property removed from the floodplain. Undergoing the necessary floodplain remediation projects to be able to develop the site. As mentioned, in the Saint Brain Creek Focus Area within the Complan, the integration of high density residential uses. Is encouraged as part of the MU E employment designation in this area. As Ava mentioned, it's really solely kind of commercial and industrial uses. So we look forward to complimenting the commercial uses with a mixed use that has medium density residential. As well as commercial employment options. Next slide, please. This, uh, next slide, please. This area, the site is compatible with the surrounding land uses. Our the residential portion would be located adjacent to the Saint Brain Creek on the north and Rogers Grove to the west. And these nature areas provide a quiet and peaceful setting for the residential buildings. The commercial is located along Sunset Street as a buffer between the residential and commercial areas. Next slide, please. And just want to highlight too, the Rivertown Annexation that you see with our twenty acre site, it really represents phase two of our site. As Ava mentioned earlier, earlier this year, our phase one, which was a six and a half acres located at eighteen South Sunset, was annexed into the city. And we are going through conceptual planning and we go to submit a site plan at some point in the future. To redevelop this site, which is currently being used as outdoor storage into some high quality. Net zero commercial flex space, which is, we believe, solely needed in in the city. As part of this, we sold about a half acre to the city of Longmont for the Resilience Saint Brain Project. So in terms of the overall concept, again, the Rivertown Annexation that's before you tonight is our kind of phase two project. Which will provide medium density residential and commercial to complement the proposed commercial with the phase one. At this northeast corner of Boston and Sunset. And next slide, please. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tony D Simone from Confluence Companies, our development partner that's moving forward and provide some more details. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and good evening, planning commissioners. It's a it's a pleasure to present tonight on the Rivertown site. My name is Tony D Simone, and I'm one of the owners of Confluence Companies. We're a golden-based vertically integrated developer, builder and property manager. And we we solely do projects in Colorado in our backyard, in places where we know we can make a difference. Our motto is creating exceptional places. And when when Dave Waldner approached us about this opportunity, we were we were really excited. We've got a ten year history with Dave doing successful projects. Our last one was in Lewisville. At North Main. Apartments at Steel Ranch. And so, so with that. We really feel like we can create an exceptional place here. So next slide. So in reviewing the Complan in Vision Longmont, there's several goals we feel like we satisfy here. I'll just touch on a few of them. You know, as we mentioned, this is an infill development. It is a blighted site. There's many, many challenges to redeveloping this site. But ultimately, we feel like we can create a higher purpose and make a really active and vibrant community by doing so. The trend right now is really creating these livable centers that allows residents to live close to where they work and lead active and healthy lifestyles. And being close to the, you know, the parks and the trail systems, we're able to do that. One of the things that we really like to do with our developments is create communities within communities. And the project that would encourage you to to visit that we've completed about three years ago is called Timberline Farms in Urbata. And the images that you see in front of you are from that from that community. One of the things that we're able to do in these communities is create these community gardens, which really brings people together. And. That site is almost identical to this one with the challenges of. There, we dealt with the Van Beaver Creek and the floodplain, tying into the trail systems. But ultimately, really creating a walkable community that accesses all those things. And it's one of the most desired places to live on the west side of town now. Next slide. And in this slide, you'll see some of our craft coworking spaces. It's one of our, one of our brands that helps bring communities to life. And one of the things that's really missing on this part of town is is that modern employment. And one of the things we saw during COVID is the shift from, you know, those large office settings back to the suburban. Whether it's working from home or working from these cowork spaces. And so that's one of the things that we're most excited about here is a is a mixed use site, bringing commercial. And bring some of that suburban office to Longmont. That's that's very much needed. I mentioned the trail systems also. This would really be a multimodal site, being able to tie into those trail systems. We really focus hard on not creating the the max density, but adequate density to really create walkability. So, so with that, we're really excited about it and look forward to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Is that your entire presentation? You're all done?
Yes, that that concludes our presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. D Simone. Appreciate that. Susan, this is a public hearing item, so I would like to get us into the public hearing comments. If you could put that slide up, please.
One moment.
Okay. So if you would like to comment on the Rivertown Annexation item that's in front of us right now, now's the time to call in. So call one eight 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 seven eight eight zero zero nine nine. When prompted, enter the meeting ID eight two eight eight three six five three one four five. When we're ready to hear public comment, we'll call on you to speak based on the last three digits of your phone number. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record, and will be allowed five minutes to speak. Please remember to mute the livestream when you are called upon to speak. We need a little bit of time to do this. We need five minutes. So start calling in now, and we will take a five minute break and be back at about seven fifty eight. Thank you.
For those folks that we just led into the meeting, make sure that you mute the livestream. And we will be calling on you once the meeting begins again, one at a time by the last three digits of your phone number. All right, Chair, I'm gonna go ahead and drop this slide and wait for our livestream to get caught up. And we do have five people who have called in. And it looks like our livestream has gotten caught up, so let me lock the meeting. And when everyone is back, I can begin with the first caller.
Okay, so if Commissioners can turn on their videos. Perfect. Okay.
All right.
We're ready to start.
Very good. Caller, your phone number ends in zero two one. I'm gonna ask you to unmute. Zero two one.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Do you want me to wait till everybody comes back online?
We are good to go. So if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
Yeah, hi, this is Eric Wallace, three three nine Pratt Street. In Longmont, the president of Left Hand Brewing Company. And also Chair of the Longmont Economic Development Partnership. I'm not here speaking on behalf of the Longmont EDP tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of of Left Hand and as a as a concerned citizen. I'm I'm in support of this. This is right down the road from us, down Boston. And so we're neighbors. We're we're supportive of what they're trying to accomplish. As a as a business owner, we have almost a hundred employees, and we're having a really, really hard time. Attracting and retaining workers and talent. Because the housing market in Longmont is basically been gutted in the middle. That workforce attainable housing has has just gotten very scarce. I just had a meeting with several of our of our newest people, and all of them had different variations of horror stories on finding somewhere to live in Longmont. I think that this this is the exact kind of project that Longmont needs. It needs more of. Not sprawl, but infill redevelopment, higher density. It's I I see it as completely in line with Envision Longmont and Advanced Longmont two point O. Which if you're not familiar with, I would encourage all the commissioners to become fluent in that as well, since that's Longmont EDPs. We're the implementation organization, public-private partnership to to implement Advanced Longmont two point O. So this falls very much in line with that, especially in terms of connectivity transit. This project is right down the road from where the the new transit station for R two D would be going. It's right on the Greenway. It also is part of the development vision for the river corridor itself. So it's ticking off a whole number of items that city council has approved. In in both the Envision Longmont and Advanced Longmont two point O plans. There's a commercial aspect to it as well. So very much, very much in favor of of this kind of thing happening. And I would say that we need much more of this kind of development in Longmont. We need to go a little denser. We need to go a little higher. We need to do it in the core. And we need to do it in all of this, all of these areas that are the hundreds of millions of dollars that are being spent. On the the river corridor and flood mitigation and pulling all of this area out. Those public dollars need to be. Put to use in creating a denser community. put to use in creating a denser community that is greener, smarter, more sustainable, and give our next generation of of younger people coming up through the workforce the opportunity to invest in and own and build equity in the town that they work. I think that it's that not only has long term benefits for our community and for what Longmont is as a as a vibrant standalone community, but it also will increase the likelihood and the viability of locally owned small businesses up and down both the River Corridor and in in our business districts, both along over on Hoover and along Main Street. So this this is, this is like a poster child for the kind of of development that should be happening in Longmont on a wider basis. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wallace. Appreciate that. Um, Susan, can you bring in our next caller?
Of course. The next caller, your phone number ends in zero six five, zero six five. I'm going to ask you to unmute. Are you there? Here you are. Can you hear us? Hi.
Yes, I can.
Awesome. Go ahead.
Sorry, this is Lila Haynes. I own the building at eighteen thirty Boston Avenue. And my concern and question is I want more clarification on this easement in between and going through my property. Thirty four hundred cars would be a huge, huge impact to the businesses in my building. I can't take this lightly, so I'd like more clarification on what that easement is. Is it a utility easement? What is it going to be?
Is that your your entire comment, Ms. Haynes?
Um. Yeah, I would like to see, you know, the documentation on the easement and what it should be used for. As I've seen nothing except for a drawing at this point.
Okay.
I guess that's my comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you calling in tonight. Susan, could we go to the next caller, please?
Yes, Chair, the next caller, your phone number ends in four five two. I'm going to ask you to unmute four five two. There you are.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sherry Malloy, twenty one thirteen Range View Lane, Longmont residence since nineteen eighty six. Thank you for volunteering your time and energy to serve on this important and I'm sure very challenging city board. I'm here to speak to the Rivertown Annexation Proposal. I realize your job is to look at proposals through the LDC lens to see whether they comply with LDC standards and review criteria. Because of its location, I would ask you to consider an additional standard for this proposal. For properties adjacent to St. Frank Creek like this one, it is prudent to apply a standard concerned with protecting the common good. This additional common good lens must reflect good stewardship of our public investment while protecting our greenways, riparian habitat, and the wildlife it supports. This additional lens helps ensure social justice for all Longmont residents. This big bigger picture view is particularly necessary for this property because it's Western Brownie, it's Baragon Lake, and Rogers Grove. Roger Jones selflessly donated this fifty five acres to the city for preservation and so Longmont residents might always have a place to connect with nature, learn, and enjoy. Any proposals for development in this area must complement this special area. When I look through this lens and read this proposal, I see several shortcomings. I'm a member of Stand With Our St. Frank Creek. We are a growing group of community members who advocate for protecting our St. Frank Corridor from potentially damaging development, which adversely impacts riparian health and wildlife. The city reach of the St. Frank has tremendous ecological value. It is critical wildlife habitat and has immense aquatic conservation value. This proposal is in very close proximity to one of the only nesting bank swallow colonies in Boulder County, a species of special concern. A well-established osprey nest is within six hundred feet. The entire St. Frank Corridor is a stream habitat connector, which is how wildlife moves from one area to another. This section of the St. Frank has yet to be funded for flood mitigation. This entire site is still designated as a floodway. The standards require the entire site must be removed from floodway before any development can occur. FEMA is not expected to change their floodplain maps for another two years. Consideration of this annexation seems premature. The RSV price tag is well over three hundred and fifty million dollars in a county. Requirements to build in a floodplain would be very cost prohibitive. But because of public investment and mitigation, outside interests like this hope to benefit from our investment. The developers stated they will be ordering a blight study, which I quote, quote, "will be the first step in pursuing an urban renewal district in analyzing possible tax increment financing options to help pay for public improvements," end quote. This means even more public dollars are intended to be used. We, the public, should get something in return for the big tax dollar price tag. Due to the massive public investment, the public deserves a significant voice in any and all development along this corridor. Furthermore, it is morally and fiscally irresponsible to put people and property in harm's way. There has been twelve flood events in this corridor in the last one hundred and twenty years. Even with the best mitigation efforts, common sense dictates this corridor will flood again. Flooding is the third most common natural disaster. We had seventeen inches of rain in four days in twenty thirteen. For the river not to respond to what's happening with climate change would break the law of physics. Undeveloped open space and agricultural lands recovered with relatively minor damage or monetary intervention from the flood. Developed areas and particularly residential properties were greatly impacted. Some, like the Mobile Home Park, were completely destroyed. This annexation application needs to be amended. There is nothing in the applicant's vague design plan that suggests any respect for the adjacent natural environment. The proposed high-density residential area of three hundred and eighty units is way too much for this sensitive area. Any development in this exceptional corridor should be exceptionally designed. This proposal doesn't meet the required goals, stating it must be compatible with surrounding property in terms of land use, site, and building layout in design. I want to be clear, I am not opposed to any development along our St. Frank Corridor. I just want it to be right. Rivers and creeks are not just sections of privately owned water. These continuous streams support all beings, plants, trees, animals, insects, pollinators, humans within its vicinity. All are interconnected and all need to be respected. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy.
All right.
Susan, next caller, please.
Chair, the next caller, I'm going to call on your phone number ends in nine four nine, nine four nine. There you are.
Hello.
Hello, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right, you may begin. State your name and address for the record, thanks.
Hi, my name is Ruby Bowman, fifteen twelve Left Hand Drive in Longmont. Review criteria C on page ten of the P and Z Communication Memo states the fall as follows. The application proposes development compatible with surrounding properties in terms of land use, site, and building layout and design and access. Planning staff wrote the following sentence to show that the application meets this criteria. Quote, "The residential portion would be a compatible neighbor to the St. Frank Creek on the north and Rogers Grove Nature Area to the west, as these nature areas would provide a quiet and peaceful setting for the residential buildings," unquote. It was clear to me when I read the statement that the city has its priorities mixed up. The issue isn't about wildlife habitat in natural areas benefiting people living in a high-density housing on the Rivertown property. The real issues are the potential adverse impacts the development will have on our precious natural areas. This review criteria should have been should have been evaluated from the wildlife perspective. In two thousand and eighteen, the Natural Resources Department conducted an open space survey and found that seventy four percent of uninvited respondents rated protecting natural areas from development as very important. Sixty six percent rated protecting rivers, creeks, riparian corridors, and wetlands as very important. And sixty four percent rated preserving wildlife habitat as very important. The residents who live already live in Longmont made their priorities clear to the city. They want our natural areas protected from development. The developer did not provide specific information about building layout and design for its development, so planning statement about it being compatible with surrounding properties is not supported by facts. Encroachment into the natural environment, excuse me, can mean noise, light, trash, pollution due to the sheer number of people living in the development. The commission should deny the Riverton Annexation Application because it does not meet review criteria C and D. I also would like to know why the city is moving forward with the application at this time. Staff wrote in the Communication Memo that the entire site would be removed from the floodway, that the top that the entire site must be removed from the floodway before development can occur. The Rivertown property is situated along a section of the St. Brain that is unfunded for the resilient St. Brain project. Even if the city were to locate funding for only the Hoover reach, say in the next three years, the design and construction of RSVP and the revision of FEMA maps takes a long time. It could be many years before the developer would be allowed to bill. Does this annexation have a time limit on when construction has to commence? Or is the annexation an open end agreement? There are many questions that need to be answered by the developer and by the city regarding a definitive timeline. I am a resident of Longmont who's lived here for over twenty four years. I've supported my community to make it a better place to live, as have many other city residents. Yet at times, it seems as if we are not heard by those who make decisions about development in our city. I've sat in council chambers when residents pleaded with city council to consider the adverse impacts that development projects will have on their trailer park community or on their neighborhood in unincorporated Boulder County. They take time to attend the public hearing to state their case and they aren't paid to be there. Yes, they and we are the ones who are are expected to pay for the infrastructure that supports developments like the one being proposed by the Rivertown developer, even though it's detrimental to our quality of life and wildlife habitat. Please reject this annexation. Clearly, it's not ready for prime time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Thank you for calling in tonight.
We have one more. Chair, so the last person I'm going to ask to unmute, your phone number ends in three two three. Three two three, there you are. Can you hear me?
I can.
Great. You may begin by stating your name and address for the record.
My name is Jamie Simo and I live at ten twenty Venice Street here in Longmont. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm calling in to express my concerns and recommendations regarding the annexation of the Rivertown property, which is directly adjacent to St. Brain Creek and to Rogers Grove Natural Area. First, I'd like to point out that because the resilient St. Rain Flood Mitigation Project along this stretch of the St. Rain is not projected to be completely funded for another three years, and the mitigation work itself will not be completed for even longer, it is premature to talk about developing this parcel. In addition, this area is within both the one hundred and five hundred year floodplains per current FEMA floodplain maps and will not be removed from the floodplain for some time. Because most property comes up for annexation only when development is desired, it is interesting that the owners of this property are applying for annexation now when development cannot occur for years. As is seemingly common for habitat and species assessments, I noted that the assessment for this property was conducted in winter and not during the breeding season. Therefore, little wildlife was seen during the survey. On page six of the assessment, this was directly addressed by mentioning that surveys would be conducted in spring or early summer of two thousand and twenty one to confirm the absence or presence of northern leopard frogs, as they would not be visible in November. Were these surveys ever conducted? If so, what were the results? If not, why not? I conduct bird surveys for the city at Rogers Grove all year long. And while I can confirm that I have never seen any species of state concern on the Rivertown property during these surveys, I have seen species such as snowy egret and kildare utilizing the admittedly heavily degraded Rivertown wetlands. Before any development occurs on this property, breeding season surveys must be conducted. Page eight of the Habitat and Species Assessment says that "Development of the Rivertown Longmont Project Site presents an opportunity to improve conditions of the buffer area by establishing native landscaping and improving vegetation cover and habitat value for urban-adapted species." This should be a requirement for any future development on this parcel and any parcel that abuts a sensitive habitat such as St. Brain Creek. In improving the buffer area along St. Brain Creek, why can this area not also be improved to provide better connectivity along the Riparian Corridor to facilitate wildlife movement? The Habitat and Species Assessment also states on page ten that "Given the highly disturbed nature of the project site, its proposed development is not likely to have an adverse impact on wildlife." How does this follow? No property exists in isolation from the area around it, especially property abutting in body of water. Even though there are sensitive fish species in St. Brain Creek not far from the Rivertown property, the Habitat Assessment states that there's no occurrence of fish species because the assessment only looked within the boundaries of the property. Impacts on the surrounding environment depend on the development. For example, if there are many impervious surfaces, this will increase runoff. Tall buildings with large windows may cause bird strikes. Light pollution disturbs both resident and migratory species. Speaking of the surrounding area, there is a red-tailed hawk nest not far from the property on the north side of the railroad tracks. It has been active for at least the last two years. I don't know if this is the same nest site mentioned in the assessment, where it was stated that it was no longer active. But any future development of this area must take this nest, if active at that time, as well as the osprey nest at the nearby fairgrounds into account to mitigate any potential for disturbance. In my final comments with regard to the Habitat and Species Assessment, I reiterate the comments I submitted in response to the annexation request back in January. There is a colony of nesting bank swallows on the Rogers Grove property just down from the Rivertown property. This is one of the only known bank swallow colonies in Boulder County. As a condition of annexation, the property owner must agree to the creation of an easement for flood mitigation on the Rivertown property so that this colony is not destroyed, as it surely will be under the current circumstances. I also ask that, given the history of unlabeled and improperly labeled hazardous chemicals stored on the property, as well as the number of violations of the facility's own spill prevention, control, and countermeasures plan, that a phase two ESA be conducted and groundwater on and near the property be tested for contaminants and treated if found. Likewise, the area of stockpiled soil and concrete should be exhumed and if determined and determined whether there are any potential hazardous materials in the pile. These should be removed and treated, if so, at owner's expense and not the expense of taxpayers. Were any of the historical hazardous waste releases prosecuted and or fines imposed? Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Simone. Appreciate you calling in.
Chair, give me just a minute. It appears that our video is our live stream is stuttering a minute. Hang on just a second. All right, looks like we are back. So for the record, we may have lost a a minute or so, and so I will need to upload a corrected version for the record, not for the record, but for our YouTube channel. And it looks like we're back. You may continue.
Great. Thank you, Susan. Thank you to all of our callers who called in tonight. We really appreciate having the feedback. We'll go to discussion amongst the commission. Anybody want to kick us off with questions? Commissioner Poland.
Sure, I'll I'll go through several and then I'll give other people a chance. Ava, question for you to begin. And these are in no particular order. These are just kind of how I do we know what the percentage as the city has figured it out for primary versus secondary? I think the only mention I've heard was during the applicants, they said it was less than fifty percent. I'm wondering if we have any kind of more firm numbers.
I can get that for you shortly, Chair and Commissioner Poland.
Okay, the second one I have is regarding, do we have any idea on the land dedication, what that looks like, amounts, locations?
I, Chair and Commissioner Poland, I don't have the exact amount. I put out the draft annexation agreement to Public Works and they need to fill in those blanks. I put out the draft annexation agreement to Public Works and they need to fill in those blanks. So they're going to work through that with our resilient Saint Rain project manager. And then that will be detailed in the annexation agreement. I unfortunately don't have the exact size and amount right now.
Okay, thank you. Can you give a quick description on what the difference is between the current zoning in Boulder versus the new proposed zoning? As far as what's allowed, any?
Right, Commissioner Poland, Chair Shernick, I am not an expert on Boulder County zoning. I can only imagine general industrial, and since it was previously a concrete batch plant, that those types of heavy industrial uses are allowed on this property at the moment. Mixed use employment. I can pull up the code shortly, but again, its primary uses are meant to be like industrial, flex office, research and development, those types of land uses.
Okay, and then I guess my last question for right now will be, can you tell us more about the agreement with the adjacent property owners for vehicle access? And that was actually one of the questions by one of the callers.
Correct. Thank you. I'm glad you asked that question. Susan, you want to, can you put that document up on the screen? So the caller that called in that owns the property on Boston Avenue, I spoke with her at length last week and I also sent her a copy of the subdivision plat. When these properties along Boston Avenue, as you can see on the bottom where it says Boston Avenue, these are the four lots there, five lots, and there was a subdivision plat. And so that was recorded and as you see where the bubble diagram is, hopefully you can read it on the screen, but it says kind of toward, Susan, if you have your cursor, are you zooming in? Thank you so much. It says there are forty-foot access and utility easement. There's a vertical line, not there, the vertical line that's coming in. Nope, right there. Thank you. Thank you, Susan. See, it's twenty feet and twenty feet there. So that's that access easement. And then if you go toward the right, that's where the Shell gas station is. And there's this little note there that says twenty-foot access and utility easements, right there. Yes, thank you. From Boston Avenue. And if you were to, sorry, I don't have the aerial map up, but there are stubouts, if you will, into this annexation parcel from the north end of these two access easements. So I talked to Ms. Haynes at length and I gave her a copy of this plat and told her that we discussed it at length with Public Works. But we did have concern, obviously, because these are third-party parcels. And so we required the applicant to put a note on the concept plan, which it's in your packet. It's one of the last notes at the bottom, but it says, if the property is annexed and the applicant submits a development application, they will be required to obtain written permission from these adjacent property owners for using access through their properties. Yes.
Yeah, so I guess then my follow-up question to that is what happens if the property owner doesn't grant the access?
Right. And so with that, I'm going to turn that over to Caroline Michael, our traffic engineer, and/or Cameron Fauks, or Chris Huffer, who would like to tackle that one?
Any volunteers?
So I'll go ahead and jump on Commissioner Poland. Thank you, Cameron Fauks. So with that, they do have two proposed accesses. So the thinking was that they could maybe negotiate one of those accesses, a secondary access, with the main access being off of Sunset.
So I guess the question then still is, what happens if neither of those southern accesses are granted? Is, does this become a, like a court case or what happens?
Right, so they would need to possibly look at a different access, maybe towards Boston through the western parcel, if we could bring that up, yes. So there, there is another possibility to go through the, from the residential duplex development on the far west side. So there you go, down south toward Boston. They would need to work through property ownership there, which I believe is owned by the county and the city of Longmont. So there is another possible option for access to Boston through this kind of triangle-shaped property south and west of the residential duplex.
Okay.
Of the development.
Thank you. And then Ava, to wrap this up, so basically at this point, granting the annexation doesn't mean that they can just go ahead and build. At a point later in time, this still have to be figured out. Just saying that we recognize that there has to be further discussions, but we approve of this in concept.
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner Poland. This is again a concept plan. It's not meant to be a detailed site plan. If this property is annexed by city council, the next step in the process would be a development application. Again, there would be neighborhood meetings, more public outreach. And so this is only a concept plan. Again, as they work through, if it's annexed, they'd have to work through the details of site access. And that's where we would really get down to the detail of needing those, those neighbor permissions to use the access points. And if they're not granted, we'll look at alternative access points, as Cameron was saying, a little bit further west. And then they would have to turn in with any development application, a fresh new traffic study. And so if any of those access points change, the traffic study would give us some suggestions and mitigation measures as well.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for right now.
Ava, I'm going to jump in on Commissioner Poland's kind of getting a lay of the land sort of questions. With the concept plan drawing that we have in front of us, I assume that this drawing gets included with what goes to city council. I mean, this is part of the agreement, correct?
Yes, Chair Shernick, the copy of the concept plan gets attached to the annexation agreement as an exhibit, and it's recorded against the property.
Okay.
So any deviation, significant deviations would have to come back through to city council for approval.
Okay. So the densities that are listed, especially for the residential parts, the bubbles, the math doesn't work for me. And I'm wondering whether the densities should even be listed on the drawing. For example, in the residential apartment development, fifteen and a half acres at about fifteen DU's per acre, that's two hundred and thirty-seven DU's, not three hundred and twenty. As mentioned in the, in the applicant's presentation, the duplex development area is three acres at one and a half DU's per acre. That's four and a half DU's, not fourteen. So can you help me understand the math? And none of, none of that comes, and the applicant's numbers don't even come close to adding up to the three eighty, which is at the bottom of the sheet. So what, what numbers and what densities are we really looking at?
Yes, Chair Shernick, good question. I went by, if you scroll a little bit further down on this concept plan, I don't know if you're able, oh, I'm sorry, no, this isn't the, it's just a snippet. I'm sorry, Susan, my bad. Sorry, that, well, the one in your packet has the notes at the bottom and it, it kind of went over and it said three hundred and eighty units. And that's what I went by, but I do agree with you that those densities didn't pencil out for me. But I went by the, the larger density, which was in the traffic study and in these notes here at the bottom of the concept plan, which is in your attachments. And so with that, I will turn it over to David Starnes, the applicant, to explain where they were going with their densities there, since it's their concept plan.
Sure, okay. And also, I'll just add in, as Mr. Starnes is coming up online here, in the traffic study, one table said that there would be three hundred and twenty apartments and another table in the traffic study said there would be three hundred and thirty apartments. So even the traffic study is not internally consistent with itself. And so, Mr. Starnes, can you help me understand your plans on density, please? Oops, you're still muted. You need to take yourself off of mute, please.
Thank you, Senator Chairman. If it's okay with you, I'd like to have, turn this over to Tony De Simone to mention the density and then Chris McGrath, who's our traffic engineer, about the traffic study question.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Tony?
Sure, yeah, I can answer that. You know, everything at this point is largely conceptual. Density-wise, we're really kind of shooting for more of a median density on the, on the multifamily component. When you add up the multifamily units and the paired homes towards the back, I think we're looking at a density of about three hundred and twenty units, which is kind of on the lower end of what we've been talking about. And then approximately twenty, twenty thousand square feet of commercial on the site. So that's, that's kind of the density we're, we're looking at.
Okay, so Mr. De Simone, so you just mentioned three hundred and twenty, and I know this is all conceptual right now, but but three hundred and twenty total units, including the duplexes. So possibly give or take a few in there, but you're not, I'm not hearing you say three eighty.
That, that's correct. We're not, we're not trying to do that many units.
Okay. And, but you're also not doing what pencils out from the math that one can derive from the drawing itself, which is like two thirty-seven plus five.
That, yeah, that, that map is not accurate. I could, I could say that for sure, so.
Okay. And yes, it'd be great to have your, your, your traffic engineer pop in here just so I can ask him about his understanding of those numbers, too.
Sure. Chris, would you mind popping in?
Sure. My name is Chris McGrath. I'm with LST Transportation Consultants, eighteen eighty-nine, eighteen eighty-nine York Street, Denver, eight oh, two oh six. So I'm looking at my traffic study here and what we assumed in the traffic study was three hundred and twenty apartment units, fourteen duplex units, and then twenty K of non-residential, which comprised of five thousand of retail and fifteen thousand of office. And, you know, as Tony said, those, it's conceptual, but it sounds like if, if he's saying three twenties the total, we were probably conservative in the traffic set because we assumed three twenty apartments and then an extra fourteen duplex units.
Okay, so Mr. McGrath, from your expertise of working with traffic, how, how broadly would the DU numbers have to shift before you needed to really redo your, your report and say, hey, traffic's going to change because of that?
Well, I think the biggest, adding twenty or thirty units or taking away twenty or thirty units probably is less impactful than if we lose access points. So as we move forward, if one of those access points to the south goes away or we end up with one on the southwest corner, as we just talked about a little while ago, that would likely be more impactful than adding or taking away twenty units.
Okay, great. Thank you for the input on that. Thank you, Mr. De Simone. Appreciate your, your input, too. Ava, I have a question for you, given what we just heard. You're probably looking up answers to Commissioner Poland's questions. So when, so we're the recommending body to city council. City council is the deciding body on, on all annexations. But do we, in your opinion, given the, what you know about the process, do we need to condition the PZR if we were to, say, go for approval of this, to say, city council, we recommend this, but don't pay attention to the, to the numbers on the drawing? Or can, can we have their, have their concept plan drawing, just strike all the numbers? You know, I mean, what's, what's the best avenue so that city council gets the best data possible from the applicant?
Yes, Chair Shernick, so the, again, the conceptual plan is just that it's conceptual. So we know that some of the, the density numbers kind of fluctuate between documents. It's really, if you would like to add conditions of approval, it would be because some aspect of the annexation proposal would only meet the review criteria if you had this one condition. And so it's up to you if that really concerns you, whether it's three hundred and twenty units or three hundred and thirty units. And you want to condition it that way. And I, I can also defer to Glenn Van Nemwegen, our director, and see if he has any thoughts about that.
I mean, I'm fine with your answer, so, you know, totally get it. Commissioner Poland?
I'll kick that off mute. I just want to say, my only concern with that document is that you're, you're basically going from about two hundred thirty to three hundred thirty. To me, that's significant. I mean, if it's twenty thirty one way or another, okay. I wouldn't mind if somehow we could incorporate it, updated. If, I think basically if you go twenty DU's per acre, you get closer to the number that we're looking at. I don't know, that, but something at least that, I think with, as Chairperson Shernick said, something that's more accurate to present to the city council, because when you look at that, you see fifteen per fifteen acres, it comes out to two twenty-five, throw in another five, ten for the other portion and the overflows. You're, you're, to me, that's a significant difference in, in what there's in one place and another. I would like the numbers to, to true up a little bit better if we send this to the city council.
And so Ava, back to your, your point that, hey, if, if you put a condition in, it's, it's because we're not meeting a review criteria. But, but basically what I'm pointing out, I think, is not that. I think it's more that we, we just have like some technical issues here. And can they be cleaned up before this were to advance to city council?
Chair Shernick, yeah, I, I think that's, it's absolutely within your prerogative, if you would like to add a condition that says, prior to city council, the applicant shall clean up the concept plan so that the density per acre shown on the concept plan matches the data that's shown in the traffic study and in the notes of the concept plan.
Okay, yeah, thanks for your help on that. Other comments and questions from the commission? Commissioner Height?
Where is my mouse to unmute myself? So I have a long dissertation, but I'll save it because it's probably going to fail. But what I want, do want to try to address are some of the environmental issues that were brought up earlier by some of the public. Ms. Maroy, welcome. Are you there, Hannah?
Yeah, hello.
All right. My brother does a lot of land development in Lake County, so maybe you know my name by him. He had trouble with trees a lot. In any event, trees are precious. I understand. Explain for me, I've raised this question before several years ago. When you are fixing a riparian way to change floodwaters or flood zones or flood districts, the resilient Saint Rain project is, is it widening the Saint Rain Water Basin or the, the creek? Is it widening it?
So I frankly, I'm probably not actually the best person to answer that question, but my understanding is it's not necessarily a widening. It could be a deepening in places and it's to contain the floodplain, so the body of water might not actually get any wider. It's more shaving it out, but I think either Jim or Chris Huffer might be able to speak to that a little bit more than I can because I'm not overly involved in the RSVP project.
That's, I understand what you're saying, but my next question then gets to, as I was reading some of the comments, to bring this property out of the floodplain, there were discussions about raising it. When you raise the property, how does that, how does that handle the water? What is that water that would have flooded that property? Where does that water go? If it's no longer, can no longer reach that property, where does it, this water that's now can't access this property, this property is now out of the floodplain, where's that water go?
I think Chris Huffer might answer that question. I see him popping up here, if that's okay. I'd rather have an engineer answer that question. I'm more of a planner, so just let, let Chris answer that. Thank you.
Commissioner Height, I'm sure Hannah could answer the question for you, but it's a good question, because this is in the middle of the floodplain. When we take away that storage area, it's basically pushing water out somewhere else. And so we always look at elevations. And so whatever's a lower elevation, well, I'd say putting something in the middle is going to raise the elevation of the floodplain. So our base flood elevation is going to go up. And whatever is underneath that elevation, it will spread out to that area. So the clomer, the conditional letter of map revision that's required for this property to develop, will have to show that there is minimal to no impact to other properties surrounding them. And there are ways to do that by creating additional volume in other areas. So you can widen out the channel, you can provide other conveyance means that goes around. But that, that has not been determined at this point in time as to what exactly will happen. But there is the preliminary plan for the resilient St. Brain. It shows basically widening the channel at this point. It does get a little bit deeper, and then we have like a low flow channel running through the bottom of it. But those are very preliminary plans at this point. As has been indicated, there is not funding for this stretch of the, of the river or the creek. But those things will need to be determined before any development can happen.
So that's kind of was in my supposition, that if you raise the property to take it out of the floodplain, you really ultimately are just pushing the water further downstream for your downstream neighbors to deal with. And then my question is, considering whether or not that's compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and your indications that, yes, you can divert that flow by making the channel wider, having other possible diversionary structures, I don't know what you're calling them. Does the applicant, when it's raising its property, responsible for dealing? How does that all mesh together? Because it sounds like that's a lot of off-property work that has to be done. Who, who coordinates that? City? The applicant?
Commissioner Height, yes. So the city has a floodplain manager, Monica Bordelini, who's not here with us tonight, but she is responsible for reviewing all of their documentation. She has to sign off on it before it goes to FEMA, and they have to show the, whatever work is being done, whether it's a coordination with the city through resilient St. Brain, if they fund portions of the resilient St. Brain project, or if they go on their own and do something to make their property developable. They have to show that there's no adverse impact on surrounding properties, upstream, downstream, to either side of them.
And if, if they can't make that demonstration, it doesn't get approved?
Correct.
Okay. Great. Happy to know that. My next comment, and I don't know, Chris, if you're the right person to answer that. In connection with developing this property, maybe, maybe not, there's some RSVP language, resilient St. Brain project RSVP. Money's coming to widen this. There's currently some dedication of the stream bed to the north. I don't see this property reaching the north side of the stream bed. Am I misunderstanding what I'm looking at?
Somebody else may be able to answer better than I can, Commissioner Height, but I believe that the dedication was on the south bank of the
Okay, then maybe I read it wrong. In addition to that dedication, there's also 150-foot setback to any development along the riparian right avoid or the riparian way. And that's just the city standard throughout the St. Brain basin, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And handling, because we're next to Rogers Grove, or this project's next to Rogers Grove, the environmental impacts on wildlife and habitat. That's what's been studied in these, you know, environmental or this wildlife assessment?
I did not review the wildlife assessment. I may ask, I believe Jim Crick or Hannah may be able to answer those questions for you.
Okay.
I'll give it a shot, and then Jim can jump in if he needs to. So the Species Habitat Conservation Plan looks at concurrent conditions on site, possible mitigation measures that would need to be taken into consideration, such as nesting bird surveys, the northern leopard frog that came up. It doesn't as much look into potential impacts of development. We're also pretty early on in the development review process. So we haven't seen full elevations or light photometric plans, things like that. So the level of detail and understanding the impact will get greater as we move through the development review process. The Species Habitat Conservation Plan is more, so what is there and what could be possibly impacted?
And the seasonality of the, the sampling or the investigations, do you check that? Do you ask them to recheck that? Are you satisfied with the level of the investigation that we have before us tonight?
Yeah, I would say the investigation just happened in March of 2021, so it's nice and recent. I know there was concern about the northern leopard frog wanting to be, a survey being required in the spring. We're actually going to have them do it closer to groundbreaking, like we would do with most other environmental mitigation measures. We'd do it closer to, you know, nest surveys, leopard frog survey, all that happens a little bit further in the, through the entitlement process. I will say we have a right to, and I suspect we will exercise that right, to ask for updates as we move through the process. So this is again, this is just the formal annexation request. They will be coming through for site plan and potentially other entitlements. And at any point, I can ask for updated Species Habitat Conservation Plan or specific areas to be updated if I feel it's appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. And now for my dissertation, which is, as other members of the commission know, I am slightly hamstrung with secondary uses in the multi-use district zones. I think I agree with others that, you know, infill, higher density, lovely concepts, but our multi-use standards allow, in certain zones, and this is one of them, multi, multi-use employment, allow residential as a secondary use. It's been explained to me that it's been interpreted by staff, by the city, by the land development department, that secondary is applied on a district-wide standard. I respectfully have to disagree with that interpretation of how our zoning code applies. Specifically, you know, 1504030A1, which is where secondary uses are defined, comes out of the box, A, describing that any secondary, secondary use on a residential property can only be on a lot, a lot that's adjacent to an arterial, to an arterial street. You know, that seems to suggest that development applications that we're looking at are lot-specific. The one that I think staff relies upon is, you know, 04030A1C, additional considerations, it's compatible with the surrounding areas, consistent with the underlying zoning and the comp plan and the purposes of the code. And then the use without diminishing the availability of land within the district for the primary use. And I think what I'm hearing from staff is that it's that language that leads to the application that the secondary use is applied on a district-wide basis as opposed to a lot-specific or a development parcel-specific basis. And I don't think it bears, it holds up under close examination. Specifically, you know, the multi-use standards, density is applied on a, on a per-acre basis. It's 18 DU per acre. It's not within the zone. It's that, that applies to a specific development parcel. Multi-use, I'm sorry, multi-use areas can only have multi-family at a density level of 18 DU's per acre. And that's in 1503060 and 1504030. Lot-specific applications of density. Not district-wide, but, but development parcel-specific. And then, I guess lastly, envision long line policy 6.3B, which was referenced in our development package today. In the MUE district, multi-use employment district, you prioritize employment while supporting secondary uses that incorporate multi-family or live-work circumstances. I can't support this, this, this concept plan, which has two acres of commercial and a 21-acre parcel. Less than 10% of the property is devoted to the primary use. Even though overall, you know, I, I think I agree, the housing stock needs to be improved. It just can't happen in the MUE district. I don't know if others will buy along with me, but that's how I'm going to come out on this project. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Height. Commissioner Oneron?
Thank you. You know, when there is a difficulty interpreting a rule, rather than going into the closed look of what the language is saying, we need to step back and understand why that rule is there and what it's trying to achieve. And try to understand really a large-scale overarching objectives and try to put that rule within there. If we're talking about supporting labor, last 10 years of experience told us that if you don't provide enough housing, if you don't mix the uses, it's going to be, A, prone to fail, vulnerable, B, increased transportation costs, and ultimately, it's going to be not sustainable. When I read the, especially the corridor recommendations of the comp plan, talk about the infill and mixing the uses, see these interpretation of looking around and understanding the problem make a lot of sense. In this particular area, we see underused industrial businesses, and they are not supported by the kind of support they need by other uses. And we just heard from, you know, the first talker, the Mr. Wallace, talked about the need for housing in the close proximity. So that is the reason why I, I understand the interpretation of the city, and I agree with the interpretation of the city. And when we talk about the secondary use in these particular zones, we need to not just look at the lot, but we need to look surrounding area, what's going on there. Because every contribution to that mixture is what the vision is creates. That is to say, if we're trying to achieve what this document is trying to tell us, we need to provide what is missing in the close proximity, not just a lot. And that makes complete sense to me. I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the comments as well. I mean, I agree with the way, again, staff interpreted the criteria. And I just want to make a couple of comments. Again, the big picture gives us the best understanding of what preservation of nature is. This is an urban corridor. This is an urban riparian corridor. There are a lot of developments around it, and this is the door, you know, kind of hole in the donut. There were a lot of investments made so that this urban corridor worked like an urban corridor. If we leave these parcels underused, contaminated, and possibly developed by further industry because it's in the county, are we really doing that? Every time we don't approve a development in this corridor, that development contributes to the sprawl. In the big picture, we're hurting more. The, you know, there are a lot of examples all around the nation about successful urban corridors accommodating good amount of density together with the life, the wildlife. Not developing is not the only answer. The other question is that, you know, there's the equitable, you know, argument. That is to say, this is a place for all the long-mond users. Well, it is underused. Not all, all, all Longmont citizens are using this place. And the reason is because of the underdeveloped parcelers around it. So by saying that, you know, this is for the whole people, and then not doing what it takes to attract people to use this conveniently, we're not doing a justice either. What we're saying is that, as it is underused right now, let's keep it underused even though a lot of public money is spent. So that's my two cents on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Oneron. Commissioner Poland?
First, I will address Commissioner Height's question. I think it's similar to where Commissioner Oneron was going. The problem is, if we try to take each individual parcel as it comes up and apply the rules, it will be very hard to do any kind of, I don't want to say major development, but areas to put in high density. Because a high density does take up quite a bit of, of land. And if you're going to say that every parcel that comes up can only be less than 50% going toward high density, you're really limiting how you're going to try to develop those individual parcels. You're not going to be able to go ahead and put in the high-density housing that is needed to support that whole area. I think that's getting back to what the city was saying, what Commissioner Oneron was saying is, as we look at this and we take a look at individual parcels, we can't treat them as individual parcels because they are part of that neighborhood. And as the owner of Left Hand Brewery said, they are looking for places nearby for their employees to live. That would help the, the, the situation in that area. When I look at that area, I think of that area, it's not very far from Hoover and Nelson Road and the mall area there, and all the buildings there, and all the businesses there that could be supported by people, which would really be walking, biking distance from this development. So this development isn't just for this parcel, it's to support that area. And I'm even going to say expand it out, it would be helpful for the areas outside of it. But keeping with the city's way the city views it, it would be beneficial for those other areas which are now commercial, industrial businesses in that area and would support them. So that's my viewpoint. It's the fact that we can't treat each individual parcel, because if we treat each individual parcel, we're not going to be able to put in the high-density housing that's required to support that whole area. So that was my little diatribe on that. I do have some questions. Ava, there seems to be one little piece of property to the east of this and to the north of the prior annexation that we approved, which is incorporated Boulder County. Do we have any idea what's happening with that piece of property?
Yes, Chair Shernick, Commissioner Poland, as far as I know, no one's approached the city asking to annex. So it's still in the county. General Industrial is currently functioning as a construction, storage facility. When I go down there, it used to be Lawson Construction. It was their offices and their, their truck and equipment storage. I don't believe Lawson owns it anymore, but I know that it's still some type of construction, storage facility when I go out there.
Okay. My next question is for Mr. Starnes. And it is, what is going to happen to the existing buildings which are currently on this property?
The existing building of Commissioner Poland and Chair, the existing buildings will be torn down. There's a variety of tenants that we have in there now. As part of our redevelopment of the property, 18 South Sunset Catty Corner, our goal will be to relocate some of the existing businesses, such as Vivid Technology and a couple other businesses in there into our new space. There's some industrial business in the back that we would work with to find new locations in Longline. So they, all the tenants that we have there, currently there, are all aware of our process. And until, you know, assuming we're successful moving forward, you know, you know, we have leases within, but we would coordinate in terms of relocation, either within our future redevelopment site at 18 Sunset or elsewhere within Longline. So they are, are up to speed on what's going on.
Very good. Thank you for that. Since I have you here, I have another question. This was brought by several of the people who have written in and called in. Why now for the annexation? You know, just to get your opinion, your point of view on this, why now for it? While we know that nothing really can go on until the floodplain gets settled out for this. just to get your opinion, your point of view on this, why now for it? While we know that nothing really can go on until the floodplain gets settled out for this, is, what's, I don't want to say what's the rush for this, but
And I'll have Tony chime in as well, but our goal is, yeah, so our goal, I mean, we understand that this can be a lengthy process. You know, we've engaged our development team, you know, we are working towards doing a loamer and a clomer, which, you know, takes time. And we, you know, believe that this infill site, I mean, we would like to be annexed in because we think it represents a great asset to the community to be redeveloped, but it takes time to get the property developed and to go through the annexation process and then the site plan and development process. So it can be, you know, a year or two to do that entire thing. And so our goal is to get moving as soon as possible. On that, I maybe have Tony chime in if he was to add some additional commentary, if that's okay.
Yeah, no, I would, I would agree with David. It just, it's a long process. We have a lot of experience dealing with environmentally sensitive areas and floodplains. We've successfully navigated several sites in both in Castle Rock, Arvada, Golden, and it just takes several years to get through it. You know, really, our first step is to is try to achieve annexation. And then once we have that work towards a site plan that everybody's comfortable with, and once we have a site plan that, that we feel is acceptable and is acceptable for the city, we then can start spending a little, little bit more money chasing it with the engineering that it takes to work through the clomer process. So and those reviews sometimes take years to get through. So we kind of take this as a stepped approach to get the project ready to be developed.
Thank you for that. I don't know if this is for Chris or for Ava. I have a question. This is in regards with the flood. One question would be, why, is there a particular reason why this area is still unfunded? And B, are there any benefits for the city by doing this annexation? Now, I know before when we talked about some of the properties out to the west, the city had found a benefit in the fact that you can kind of link up areas and better do a continuous work, whereas trying to work with Boulder County, you're introducing another person, there's other things to work around. So two things, is there a particular reason why it's unfunded? And B, are there benefits for the city if we annex this?
So Commissioner Pollan, I'm going to defer to Chris Huffer on the first question about the funding, but to answer your second question, one of the main benefits, yes, is for permitting purposes. They wouldn't have to go through Boulder County permitting, which has a reputation of taking a really long time. They would be working through the city of Longmont's Floodplain Administrator, Ms. Bordelini, for permitting. And I'm going to turn it over to Chris about the funding.
Yes, Commissioner Pollan and Chairman Schernack, funding, obviously, we don't have unlimited funds. So RSVP has been working through and prioritizing, and obviously, you can't do an upstream reach without doing the downstream reach to get the effects that you're looking for, to try and bring the floodplain back into the channel. So we have to work it from the bottom end up and getting the most, I guess, bang for our buck and getting the most properties out of the floodplain from the new hydrology that was done, new mapping that's going through. The city has prioritized working from downstream to upstream and as we've gone through, we have gained help from FEMA. We have several grants from FEMA and a lot of city dollars that have gone into this project through the drainage fund. But then there's also the transportation for all of the bridges and working with the railroad to reconstruct the bridge. It's just we have limited funds and we're kind of at the end of what we have set aside and what has been budgeted and approved through council. I'm not sure if that answers your question directly.
That does, that does. Thank you. Ava, I do have a question. This is in regards with the mixed-use employment. There is some concern by the community about putting high density, and in this case, high density next to Rogers Grove in that area. Are there any limitations as far as what type of residential property can go into a mixed-use employment? In other words, can something like a single-family development go into mixed-use employment? Or does it have to be some kind of high density?
Yes, Commissioner Pollan, single-family residential is not a permitted use in the mixed-use employment zone. It would have to be some type of multifamily development. And again, high-density residential is allowed in the mixed-use employment as a secondary level use. I did get that data for you. So there are about 54 acres in that little segment off between Boston Avenue and Rogers Grove and toward Price Road on the east includes Left Ham Brewing, Woodley's Furniture, a construction company, among many others.
And out of those 54 acres, currently there is no residential then?
There is no residential right now. Currently, it's all industrial users there.
So we're talking, everything tells to be 54, and we're looking at about 20-ish that we're going to put in residential here?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that. And then one final question, at least for now, for me. The, in the applicant's pack, they mentioned that this was determined to be a blighted area. And I guess, who determined that? And can you give a quick dissertation on what it means to be blighted? And I guess, what are different ways that you can get something to be unblighted?
All right, Commissioner Pollan, I'm going to have David Starnes answer that question because I'm not involved in this blight study. We do have a redevelopment manager at the city, Tony Chakon, but I'm not familiar with this blight study. So I'm going to turn it over to David.
Thank you, Ava. Commissioner Pollan, Chairman Schernack, yes, our goal, you know, we had a blight, a blight study is related to understate statute for urban renewal. An urban renewal defines blight through seven criteria, whether it's, you know, it has environmental contamination or odd lots that meet the state criteria. Because of the nature, you know, of this site, you know, that is underutilized, it's undeveloped, our goal is to look at a larger urban district for this entire area. We've been in communication with some of the adjacent property owners. We had a blight study, you know, several years ago that just kind of looked at identifying conditions of blight, which they did. Obviously, city council, as the city's urban authority, takes action on designing an urban area. That was never processed back then. Our goal, should there be interest in getting working with adjacent owners and working with Tony Chakon from the city, would be to present a proposal to the urban authority about looking at the urbanal area and then doing an updated blight study that we, that we would need to do again, since it's been several years. So that's the goal. And again, with urbanal statute, you know, in blight, the goal is to potentially use financing to assist in remediation of these blighting conditions and provide economic development opportunities that would remove the blight. So that's kind of where we are now. We haven't formally submitted anything, a proposal. We've just been doing some internal discussions. And then we'll be working with the city redevelopment manager to explore updating the blight study and then proposing that to city council and the urban authority at some point in the future, assuming we're successful with moving forward with the annexation process. Does that help answer?
Yes, it does. Thank you. That's all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Pollan. Commissioner Boone.
Thank you, Chair Schernack. I wanted to just comment on Commissioner Height's comments. I support his concern about secondary uses. In this particular case especially, because the development is going to happen for years. And it really, it really appears that if some, if an applicant is trying to put residential units into a mixed-use development and therefore using the surrounding district for the percentages, that the first one in kind of has a benefit. And then once that's granted, it limits what maybe other surrounding properties would do. So that's, that's a concern. Personally, I think it's premature to accept any kind of a concept development plan at this point. And I don't know if we can approve an annexation of this type without this particular preliminary concept plan. It, it seems like once the flood mitigation happens, that the setbacks are going to change, the developable area is going to change, et cetera, and that it's premature to even consider this concept plan at this point. Also, per the applicant's own words relative to number of units, I believe he defined it as medium density. That especially would be true of the duplex area. And medium density is not an allowed use, secondary use for this zoning. So those are, those are my comments with respect to the secondary use. I'm concerned about the secondary use. There have been some recent applications where the whole district was considered for the secondary use and it was, I think, fair because development was imminent. And it was going to happen right away. This is going to be years. With the flood mitigation, it's going to be years and years. So that's really all I have to say about that. I'm concerned that the only habitat information we have is from March. It's in the winter when a lot of stuff isn't happening. And I think some of the collars and some of the letters also express those concerns. I realize that none of that is final at this point. Just, just a concern. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Boone. Commissioner Goldberg, before we get to you, I'd like to try to address one of Commissioner Boone's questions by asking Glenn Van Muygen to explain something for us, if I could, Glenn. There you are. So Commissioner Boone just made the, the point that using this district approach to considering secondary uses could favor the first one in. And could you explain to us how the city staff responds to that? And I'll, I'll just add on to another scenario that I've been kind of bouncing around in my head since Commissioner Height's comments, which is if we've got a district area and one developer is putting in, say, you know, a little bit more residential than might normally be allowed as a secondary use, then somebody else comes in and say, uses up the rest of, of residential as a secondary use for that district, then what happens to the last person? I mean, this is kind of just a restating of Commissioner Boone's first one in benefit. But, but I'm looking at, at the end, like, so the last person to develop, if all of the residential as a secondary use has been used for the district, and how does the city even track that? Then how's that fair for the last developer? So two questions.
Yeah, those are good questions. I guess when I thought it through after talking to the staff and how we've made this interpretation, I guess I kind of leaned towards maybe what Commissioner Corcutt was talking about is think about creating, and I'll say it another way, a walkable area. I think that's kind of the goal of a mixed-use area, is that you're providing jobs, shopping, and housing opportunities close together. But then you also have to think, where should those retail uses be located? Where should the employment uses be located? You typically want those out on the corner of arterials. So there is some location. You know, the first, first one in, I don't know how to deal with that. That is, I, I think you have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. And if they have an opportunity to create a mixed-use district, and you're meeting all those land use criterias of what properties need the best access, and how do you buffer? In another case, you might be buffering existing neighborhoods where you wouldn't want to put industrial uses right up against them. So I wish there was just an easy formula. You could just plug in the numbers and boom, it'd tell you what those land uses are. But ultimately, I think you're going to have to take them on a case-by-case basis. And ultimately, there might be, you know, a 20-acre parcel that the only use is employment. And then their alternative would be, you know, they could come in and maybe try and amend the comprehensive plan to make a case of why employment doesn't work in that particular case. But that's, that's kind of a tough road to go down.
So let me follow on with if if a project like this, which has such a long lead time because of all of the climbers and everything for the floodplain, et cetera, that needs to all be worked out, if there's another lot in this district that we're talking about, that, that the city is looking at as an aggregate, if somebody came up and said, yeah, I've got this, this project and, and I can get it built within a year and a half, and the project in front of us tonight is still, you know, working its way through. Does the city say, well, no, you can't because, you know, we've already used up all of our, our residential, we've committed the, the residential percentage for this district to this project that's going to take, you know, four years. So no, we, we can't actually let you do that because somebody's already committed to that.
So the other parcel would already be annexed and ready to go?
Yep.
Same.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if the city has faced that situation. I would say we've kind of made a commitment through a conceptual plan. So off the top of my head, I would say, you're right, we've kind of set the land uses. From, from an annexation standpoint, I guess I've always felt that if somebody is willing to annex now, you get them now because now the city can control what happens on that property. There are some small benefits because we do get property taxes now versus later on the property. Certainly for vacant land, it's not that high, but there are some benefits to getting it annexed now that the city realizes.
Okay. Thanks, Glenn. Appreciate your expertise. Commissioner Goldberg.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. Listen, I want to start by thanking Chairman Boone for, for feedback here. This is really, I think, a good time to be having this discussion. But maybe the first thing I'd like to do is ask Ava just a follow-up off of Chairman Boone's comment. She mentioned that given the lower density that we were discussing, that the lower density of housing that was presented or that Chairman Schern revealed, that may be entering us into a, a type of housing that's not permitted as a secondary use in this area. Can you, can you start there? Given the updated numbers, the lower numbers, are we, is this apples to apples here? Are we able to use the secondary conditional use as a, as an option here? Or, or have we dabbled into new terrain?
Chair Schernack and Commissioner Goldberg, in our land development code and our zoning standards, mixed-use employment, while it doesn't allow single-family houses, it does allow attached residential. So the townhomes there would be permitted with site plan review. And then in terms of the density, you know, that, the, what you're referring to in the secondary use is part of our comprehensive plan where it says high density can be allowed. And I think that we would include the townhomes with the whole project as an aggregate, that it's essentially higher density. And we do allow different forms of that building. as an aggregate, that it's essentially higher density. And we do allow different forms of that um building uh to look like. And so there would be some apartments, and then there would be townhomes.
Thanks, Ava. That helps me move along with my line of questioning um a little more confidently. But uh, I guess the first thing I wanted to follow up with that with is um with a ton of respect for Commissioner Height, um, you know, we've addressed this. Uh, how are we calculating percentages? You know, is it by lot or by the region or district? Uh, we've discussed that now in a meeting or two. Uh, and I'm gonna just second um Commissioner Oren, Oren stands here. I can't be as eloquent as he was, so I'll just say what he said, you know? Um, in the end, I like stepping back, recognizing what is the goal that we're trying to achieve? What is the objective of the rule? What's the reasoning behind the rule? And then really, I see us as kind of the referees, you, you know, here on these meetings to determine and make sure that our rules are, are meeting those goals. And uh, and so there's a little bit of, there's something organic there. And um, and I think we do a really good job of that and recognizing when the rules need some uh bearing or not. So, but given the feedback from the, from Ava and team, how they're calculating it, I'm just gonna move forward confidently and comfortably with this kind of high-level analysis rather than per lot analysis. Although I appreciate your, your perspective. Um, Ava, one of the uh members of the public, Ruby Bowman, uh took issue with the line, the residential portion would be a compatible neighbor to the Saint Brain Creek on the north and Rogers Grove nature area to the west. I guess my question is just real simple. Why did we put that in there? Why do we feel comfortable um that this is compatible? Um, given the nature areas around us? Could you just give us a little insight to your thinking behind that?
Uh, yes, Christian Goldberg. Um, I think that uh when we look at land uses, particularly near a nature area, um, we look to find the least intensive land use near a nature area. You know, if he had an industrial use, right? This is essentially zoned as, you know, those are going to be uh more impactful. There will be more traffic. There will be more noise potentially, right? Uh, more potential lighting impacts if they have night duties. Um, and so the least impactful land use typically is residential, um, particularly against a nature area. That's where we were coming.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, I think that, that's great feedback. Um. I think it was, forgive me, the newest member to our team, Hannah Moroy, who uh was speaking uh around the species and habitat studies, the environmental site assessments. Um, Ava, is it true? Uh, sorry, I'm, I'm still kind of directing this toward Ava. I'm just giving credit to, to who was offering the feedback. Um, Ava, what I heard was um that A, you know, the feedback in the packet was that the site assessment, the species, the species and habitat assessment all kind of met the burden disco round, but that there would be opportunity to revisit those or have those done closer to the actual development. Could you just spend a second touching on some of these nature studies? Um, when will they be revisited? You know, there was concerns around seasonality. I heard Hannah say that we can ask for that to be done during the summer, not the winter. But when, when again, will we see these, these studies again?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Goldberg. Um, so again, uh, when we're, when we get an annexation application, we're really just taking stock of what's out there, what we need to be mindful of. Are there any federal or state protected species? We should be aware of things of that nature, you know, any birds. Um, but really, uh, when, you know, if the property is annexed and a development application comes in, we absolutely every time request a fresh species and habitat study. Uh, we, we, and we look into those in great detail because this is right, this is the more detailed area. This is the site plan. So we really want to get into more details, whereas we're kind of looking at it on a higher level during annexation, like these are things we need to look out for. These are things that could be an issue. We didn't identify anything that could be a significant issue if we annexed in this property. Uh, but again, um, if it's annexed and they decide to come in with a development application, we'll require a fresh species and habitat report. That'll be reviewed again by uh Jim and Hannah as well, um, to make sure that everything's in compliance with um not just local and our regulations, but state and federal regulations as well.
Great. Uh, and if, when, if this gets annexed and then if and when there's a development, will it have to meet the setback requirements of the Resilient Saint Brain Project? Will it have to be, uh, uh, you know, 150 foot, forgive me while I read, a building setback from the creek and 100 feet setback from Rogers Grove, unless there's some variance granted?
That's correct, Commissioner Goldberg. Uh, so upon development, um, one of their things they'll have to show and prove up in their species and habitat report is where the edge of the riparian area is. And then the setback will be taken 150 feet from that. If you have any more detailed questions on that, I'll, I'll toss it back to Hannah and Jim. But that's generally speaking, the requirement, and then it's 100 feet from Rogers. Uh, again, only, only if uh the newly revised upon development uh species and habitat study shows that there is riparian habitat um on the east side of Rogers Grove, you know, that would be abutting this property. Uh, then yes, those would be the requirements. Our expectation from city planning is that you set back the buildings and parking and get it out of that 100 or 150-foot setback. Uh, and then um if they are not able to, for whatever reason, they would have to go through that variance process with the sustainability evaluation system that City Council uh recently implemented.
Great. And would this, excuse me, would this property or any development have to be officially out of the floodway? Um, you know, I think in the packet it said that it had to be removed from the floodway. They're working on a clomar. I won't pretend to be able to describe exactly what that is, but governing bodies above us will determine that this is this property is now safe or out of the floodway entirely.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Goldberg. Um, I can, I can toss that over to Cameron or Chris, uh, but that's generally, you have the correct answer. Uh, you can't develop anything in the floodway, right? Um, until you get uh squared up with FEMA. Uh, and so they would need a, a conditional letter of map revision uh before we would allow any development. And I don't know if Chris or Cameron want to add anything to that? Did I miss anything?
Commissioner Goldberg, this is Cameron. Um, I, I think Ava got it covered correctly. You're correct, Ava. There's no development allowed in the floodway until um the cloamer uh has been approved by FEMA. And then, you know, in the future, they finish out with the lomer process. So, that's correct.
Great, great. Thanks, Cameron and Ava. You know, I think with that, then I'm inclined to just look back at some of the comments from our public. Uh, I think it was Sherri, Sherri Malloy who mentioned um kind of the lens of common good. And when I look back at our packet, I looked at, you know, how does this um annexation and project, how will this all fit with the comp plan and our just greater goals? Uh, and there's a pretty lo- long list of how this will help us, help the greater good and help um, you know, our Longmont community as a whole. Um, they're listed on page nine. We see uh recognizing goal 1.1, embracing a compact and efficient pattern of growth. 1.1A prioritizing the development of sites located within the service area where infrastructure is readily provided. Supporting the adaptive reuse or redevelopment of underutilized areas. Promoting a sustainable mix of land uses. Striving for that balance mix of residential, employment, and retail. Uh, continuing, continuing to work towards completing the greenway system. Um, you know, there's a bunch of them there. There's probably 10 of them listed there that are all, I think, really looking at our town and each project through the lens of common good. Uh, so I really appreciated just kind of reflecting on that. Um, you know, and I guess um, recognizing that what we have, what we hear time and time again is the need for increased housing inventory. And while it's a little bit of a bummer that it's not high-density, you know, everything is in high-density so that we can start addressing the housing needs and solving the housing needs in our town. Uh, we are seeing that nice mix of um medium and higher-density projects coming through. We've approved several of them in the last year or so. And here's another one that just seems like a good fit for our town. Uh, so I guess with that, you know, I'm leaning to be supportive of the annexation and zoning and concept plan. Uh, so maybe I'll stop there and just see if there's any feedback from the commission before we make the next move.
Any other comments? Any motions? Commissioner Pollan?
Yeah, first of all, I, I, I'd like to comment on this. Um, given the thought that was put into Invision Longmont, uh, given the fact that Boulder County had put this as industrial use for this whole area, you know, it could have been out towards even the, the pond towards Rogers Grove, all, all the way out there. It could have been developed. It just never was because nobody ever wanted to develop that. Uh, there wasn't an industrial need for that. Um, I think that this is actually a good use. Um, it is what Invision Longmont looked for in this kind of area, this kind of mixed use. Maybe it is a little bit for this parcel, a little bit heavy on the residential. But I do agree with the city's view that you look at it as the overall area for mixed-use employment in that area. And in that case, it does fit in. Um, I do find that this is something that is needed. We heard the business community say that, yes, we do need more residential pe- use in this area. We do need more people who can live and do easy transportation, walking, biking, whatever it is to get to those businesses. You know, the business community has spoken. Um, given the fact that Invision Longmont already envisioned putting something in this area, they didn't envision it being an open area. Um, I do think that this is a good development for it. Um, I do understand the applicant's need and, and saying that, hey, we just want to start the process. Now it's going to take us multiple years. We know that. We understand that there's going to be changes made potentially down the road, depending what happens with the, with the work on uh that uh, on the Love Town Creek, but um they're okay with starting the process now, getting it in and starting to work on it, given the fact that we do have the 150-foot setback from riparian areas and that they would have to go through uh and ask for bearings for that. Um, I think there is protection down the road to make sure that things are reviewed. I think that as a general concept, what they're looking for in this area, what they're putting into this concept plan, which is why they want to annex it, I think it is a good use. So what I'd like to do at this time is I would like to move that we approve PZR 2021-7A.
Okay, we have a motion to approve PZR 2021 dash 7A. Um, I would like to uh, uh, put a friendly amendment uh or, or a suggestion to change uh the motion to uh, PZR 2021-7B in order to uh add a condition to correct the concept plan densities to align them with the traffic study before this is sent to City Council, something like that.
I, I, I would be amenable to that, yeah. And actually, I had that note. I just missed it. So yes.
Okay, so could we restate?
Sure. What I would like to do is, is approve PZR 2021-7B with the condition that we update or that the applicant update the map that is uh, uh, supplied with the proper numbers that shows their intended build-out of approximately 320-ish to make the number square. However, the, the terminology for that is.
Okay. All right. Um. Commissioner Oren?
I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve PZR 2021-7B, seconded by Commissioner Oren. And for Jane, for our recording secretary, for her purposes, the intention, and Commissioner Pollan, don't let me put words in your mouth, change this if, i- i- if you want, but I think the intention of the condition on 7B would be to ensure that the densities expressed on the concept plan need to align with the traffic study before this goes to City Council. Is that acceptable, Commissioner Pollan?
That is acceptable.
Okay. Commissioner Oren, since you seconded, do you agree with that as well?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Great. So um, let me just chime in with my own uh thoughts about uh some of the discussion. Um, I agree with Commissioner Oren, Commissioner Goldberg, and Commissioner Pollan um about this project overall. Um, but I completely recognize Commissioner Height and Commissioner Boone's concerns about the first person in and about um each individual pars- parcel not meeting what some of the state uh standards are. So, so we're in a uh kind of a, a difficult position, and I'm going to side more on the side of looking at the bigger picture and trying not to, as Commissioner Oren pointed out, trying not to contribute to sprawl. Um, I also think uh Mr. Wallace, when he called in, he pointed out that this is an infill project. It's not going to contribute to sprawl. We need denser, higher, and in the core. I like how he summarized that, that those are, those are three goals which will help the city in the long run. And um, and so uh those um have made me uh lean towards supporting this. Um, Commissioner Pollan?
Yeah, on that, I agree with uh one, Ben Nwudj, that you kind of have to look at things on a case-by-case basis. This is not the case where we're looking at the first person in who's taking the, the entire pie to put residential. We're looking at somebody who's really coming to an area where there's not much left to info after this gets done. And they are saying, you know what? Currently, there's no residential in this infill area, and we think that there needs to be more infill. So on this case-by-case basis, if you look on a case-by-case basis, for me, this is easier to, to justify in the fact that, yes, we do need residential in this area. There's, it's not like we're preventing anybody coming along down the road to do residential in this area. So this isn't the person who's doing the first is, is getting the benefit. This, this one is, they saw a need, and they're not preventing anybody down the road from, from also trying to meet that need. I would agree that in the future, if there are developments where we're looking at it, it's a bigger area with more undeveloped area around it, that yes, that would be something to consider. I just don't think for this particular issue that that comes into play.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Oren, you have your hand up, but I'm not sure if that was from previous.
Uh, it's from the previous. I don't know how to shut it down.
Oh, okay. I, there, there should be a lower hand uh command. You might get it in the three dots. Yeah, I, I think you got it. Commissioner Height?
Thanks. Um, I just want to reiterate that um when Invision Longmont was being put together, we were newly around a um zoning map, and we're putting together um zoning districts. Some of us were concerned about where industry, where business, where commercial enterprises were going to take place. Um, and not to be entirely a residential area. Residential areas um sometimes tend to develop um NIMBY attitudes to um encroaching businesses and commercial enterprises. In this particular ass, this particular project across the street, the, the former Lawson storage yard now being used by somebody else as a storage yard for construction equipment, um, not annexed into the city. If and when it wants to come in, or when it comes in after this project is developed, it's going to have a tough time. Um, when the adjacent 20-acre parcel, 18 acres of which is developed as residential, um, for, for this property to be um, or, or for this, this, this made-up Lawson project I'm talking about, for it to be anything other than um somewhat compatible with residential activities, um, which is flipping the dog over on its back by the tail. Um, we have now allowed a secondary use to become a primary use, which potentially prohibits the primary use from taking place on the property next door. Um, I read secondary use the way, in a common sense manner, I think. Um, it's applied It's applied to the lot. It's how we apply our zoning standards across the board. So, you know, I'd beat this to death. I really suggest that what we possibly need to do is suggest a text amendment to our code. If this is the way we interpret, you know, zoning codes to apply at a district level as opposed to a parcel level. Thanks.
Commissioner Boone?
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that I do totally support infill and infill residential and high-density residential because I think that it's needed in this city. I wish we could separate the zoning and annexation from the concept plan because I totally support the annexation and the zoning. I just don't support the concept plan. So I don't even know how to vote because I only support part of it. I guess that's all for now. Thank you.
Further conversation, comments, anything? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for approving PZR 2021-7B. Let's do a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Boone.
Hey, I knew I was going to go first.
Actually, you know what, to be fair, given your, I didn't think about it. Let me do it in a different order.
I don't mind, I don't mind going first. That's okay. You know, I would like it on record that I don't support the concept plan, but I am going to support the motion. And we will see down the line, in my opinion, that this concept plan will change.
Okay, so that's a yes.
That's a reluctant yes.
Okay, Commissioner Height?
Is a nay.
Okay, Commissioner Pollan?
Yes.
Commissioner Teta?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Oneron?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. So Jane, that passes 1236 to 1 with Commissioner Height dissenting. And I need to find our statement here. This item will now be forwarded to the Longmont City Council for action. If you're unfamiliar with council procedures and intend to appear before council, please contact the planning division for further information at 303-651-8330. I want to thank the applicant and their team for coming tonight and explaining their project to us. And Ava, we have you for the rest of the night. So hang in there. Commissioner Pollan?
Also, I would like to thank the public. I think it has been noted that there are 17 people, some for and some against this. But once again, it was good to see the public inputting on this, getting their ideas, getting their thoughts, allowing us to have a good discussion about this. So once again, I want to thank the public for that.
Yep, totally agree. Thanks for mentioning that, Commissioner Pollan. It's 9:45. I think we could all use about a five-minute break. So how about if we reconvene at 9:50? All right, see you in a bit.
All right, Chair, I'm going to go ahead and drop the slide and then we will wait for the live stream to get caught up.
Thank you, Susan.
All right, looks like we're all back.
Great. Welcome back, everybody. We're moving on to item 6B on our agenda, which is 1402 Kaufman Street Conditional Use Site Plan. Ava Perichewski, could you please walk us through the project?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair Shernick and Commissioners. Susan, thank you. All right, we're going to queue this up. So this is the 1402 Kaufman Street Conditional Use Site Plan. Again, Ava Perichewski, Planning and Development Services. Next slide, please. So again, I'm going to just give you some background. So this property, kind of a larger parcel, it kind of backs onto two streets. But for the purposes of this development, it's taking place on the east side of Kaufman Street, as you see from this map. It's north of Mountain View Avenue. On the south side of Mountain View is the cemetery there. And then this property, again, is part of a larger parcel. It kind of curves around toward Main Street. And there's currently a commercial business there on Main Street, a tire shop, El Galito Tires. And then there's a house on the, would be the northwest section of the property. On the top left side, there's a house there. And then the rest of this parcel primarily has nothing on it. There is a garage there kind of toward the east side of the property line. There's a used car, Victory Motors Sales Business, that abuts this property to the east on Main Street. And its zoning is mixed-use corridor. Next slide, please. And so with that subdivision, as I was just telling you about, as you can see from the arrows, they're creating a lot line up on the north end, so it will kind of separate off the tire shop and the house there on the north side, leaving about a half-acre parcel or so slightly larger. And so the minor subdivision is something that's gone through an administrative review with the Development Review Committee. And then after this lot was reconfigured into this new lot, they submitted a conditional use site plan application. And that's to develop this property with a 6,300-square-foot commercial building. One of the tenant spaces would be for auto repair, which is a conditional use in the mixed-use corridor when it's 250 feet from a residential use. And I apologize, but from that previous slide, Susan, if you would just throw up the previous slide real quick, sorry about that. If you look to the left of the yellow parcel on Kaufman Street or to the west, those are all apartment buildings. So we could go back to the next slide. And so our land development code, while this type of business would be allowed by rights, it is allowed by right in the mixed-use corridor, it's conditional because of its proximity to those apartments. Additionally, there's two other tenant spaces that the applicant proposes for light industrial uses. Again, those are allowed uses by right in the mixed-use corridor. However, if you have more than 5,000 square feet of that type of land use, it's a conditional use. So the whole site plan is a conditional use site plan. The development review team went through the development standards. It meets all of our standards, so there's no variances associated with this. It meets our landscaping, parking, setbacks, height, et cetera. And as you can see, there's an existing garage on the east side of the property there. And that's planned to remain and serve as an accessory structure to this. Next slide, please. So these are just the building elevations. The applicant also has a presentation. But again, this project does meet our land development code. This is a one-story with a clear story, 24 feet in height. 64% of the front facade facing Kaufman Street provides glazing awnings, entrance doors. Its primary building materials are stucco, has a stone wainscote and some painted metal panels as well, where you see the black. Next slide. So again, the reason this is a conditional use, again, just to reiterate, is because light industrial and automotive repair use as well, they're allowed by right. If you're within 250 feet of a residential use, or if you have more than 5,000 square feet of light industrial, you've got to get conditional use approval. So staff looked at the performance standards section of our code to see what limitations or notes we can add. And we had them add some notes on the cover page of the site plan. And there are restrictions on hours of operation for delivery and outdoor areas to mitigate any impacts to the residential to the west. We also received an acoustic study from the applicant. And the acoustic study, I guess ultimately determined that the uses wouldn't exceed the allowable ambient noise levels. And finally, there were really minimal traffic impacts associated with this development would generate about 76 vehicle trips a day, and they do provide onsite parking. Next slide, please. And so just in terms of community input, we had a neighborhood meeting back in November of 2018. Because it's a conditional use, we notified 1,000-foot radius, so we did capture a very large audience. However, only one person came to that meeting. They didn't identify any concerns. They were just there out of curiosity. And so it took the applicant a while to submit their actual application after the neighborhood meeting. Excuse me, the code does not have a limitation on time or, you know, a maximum amount of time for you to turn in a notice of application after a neighborhood meeting. But so we determined that although a couple of years had passed, because there was so little public input at the neighborhood meeting, we would go ahead and accept the notice of application. We sent out a notification again to 1,000-foot radius and posted the signs. We did tell the applicant that if any significant concerns were raised, that we would punt it back to another neighborhood meeting. And we did not get any comments when I sent out that notice of application. We then sent out a notice of application and posted signs on August 3rd. And again, I hadn't received any comments from the public. Next slide. And so at this time, staff is recommending approval of Resolution 8B, conditional approval. We had some, just a few loose end comments from Cameron Folks and Public Works. They were really engineering design, not really anything that would impact the footprint or the design of this project. And so again, we just recommended conditional approval that they turn in revised drawings to meet the Development Review Committee's corrections. Next slide. And with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant. I believe Paul Sorenson will be making the presentation for the applicant and then we'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ava.
Yes, hi, I'm Paul Sorenson with Sorenson Engineering and Construction. And we do really appreciate your taking a look at our project. We'll try to keep it, our presentation pretty short. As Ava mentioned, this is the 1402 Kaufman Street Minor Platte and Conditional Use Site Plan. And we're proposing a new commercial building in the MUC mixed-use corridor. Next slide, please. As Ava again discussed, this is a minor subdivision to construct a 6,200-square-foot building. It's going to include three commercial bays, all allowed proposed uses in the MUC mixed-use corridor, including vehicle repair and maintenance and light industrial manufacturing. This also supports Invision Longmont characteristics for mixed-use corridor. It may contain a diverse use of uses and types of structures, encourages appropriate transitions of uses, densities and building designs between mixed-use corridors adjacent neighborhoods. And it's a targeted infill and redevelopment project. Next slide, please. I would like, I would like to now turn it over briefly to John Beggs of Russell Mills Studios. They did the site plan and the landscaping, and John can describe, you know, the various landscaping and all the effort we went through with the city to come up with with this plan that you're looking at now, that we feel is going to be a pretty attractive amenity to the city. So with that, I'll turn it over to John at this point.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Thanks to the commissioners. So I was just going to do a little bit deeper dive on the site plan, kind of explain the nuts and bolts of a little bit of the design here. So Kaufman Street's on the left, so playing north. There is an existing sidewalk along Kaufman. What we decided to do is we've set that building back 20 feet from the sidewalk there and created another sidewalk adjacent to the building. Have a concrete stairs that come up towards the middle of that sidewalk, acting as an access point. acting as an access point. But there's also access, accessible access on the south side near the access, the vehicle access point. One thing to keep in mind is we we pulled the concrete sidewalk adjacent to the building off just slightly so we could bring in some foundation planting. We definitely wanted to make sure that we grounded the the building in some in some landscape. Along Kaufman Street, there is a small parkway there with turf grass and ornamental trees. There is overhead lines, so putting any large deciduous trees is not possible. Going around to the north side of the building, there is an access walk that connects that the walk in front of the building along the west side and then connects to the to the parking area along the east side. There's a small gathering picnic table there for, you know, having lunch or having a break for any one of these three businesses. And then as you move from that that space, there's an accessible route that's outlined. Actually, kind of a long, if you run from the picnic table to the east and then up against the existing garage south, and then it hits the van accessible space. So there's our accessible space there, along with some additional parking spaces. To the south of that, there's a trash enclosure that would match the the architecture that's proposed with the building, with a couple of trash dumpsters there. There was a large existing tree on the south side that we wanted to do everything that we could to preserve that. So we jogged the curb around that in order to preserve that along the south side. Wanted to create a buffer there. I did want to point out that there is an existing fence along the east side that we're going to to keep and maintain. It's in good shape, so there there was no need to remove it. We are going to add landscape along that edge. We are going to replace the the fence along the south side, add some additional landscaping there. And then to round out the site plan, there is the proposed access will have a vehicle gate there. Want to add some security to this space, but also to create a visual buffer there as well when the businesses are closed. That's all I had. I'm going to hand it over to Abby Rutledge with Markley Designs, the designer for the the architecture side.
Next, next slide, please.
Thank you, John, Commissioners. So as Ava previously mentioned, we've worked closely with city planners throughout this design period to create what we believe is an attractive building facade, which meets the city's development code. Particularly, we have used a variety of material textures and colors, as well as ample penetration along with vertical and horizontal building articulation to create a building that should not only serve to be a nice fit within the surrounding neighborhood, but should enhance the expectation of a commercial building within this mixed-use corridor. The horizontal articulation being used is areas of overbuild from the main metal building structure, which will incorporate finishes varying from those on the main structure. We use contrasting light and dark tones in order to create depth additional to the overbuild articulation. For the vertical articulation, we've used four sections of parapets in varying length for enhanced visual interest. With our four main alternating materials, large windows and awnings, and our vertical and horizontal protrusions, I think we've got a pretty great design that we're all excited to see progress. We hope you agree. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Abby. Next slide, please. So just to just to summarize, we feel as though that we are presenting the city with a a very attractive new commercial building that will that will be an amenity for the city for for many, many years to come. Our proposal, we believe, complies with city standards. The City Longmont Land Development Code, conditional use approval under Section 150206C. And so we comply with that as well as Section 1504.03OD, which restricts uses for automotive maintenance within 250 feet of a residential unit. So in accordance with the with the conditional use requirements, there'll be no vehicle bodywork or painting done on this site. There'll be no outside vehicle repair or maintenance. And so, and as Abby pointed out, we meet the architectural standards as far as exterior materials and color scheme go. Facade appearance and articulation, which we worked greatly with the city staff on on coming up with with those design elements that that meet the the code requirements. We have access and parking provided, ADA access, and we handle the drainage on the site as well. Next slide, please. So we do recognize on the conditional site approval criteria, we do recognize that conditions that we have to ensure compatibility with neighboring properties and with other things and to mitigate potential adverse impacts. And so this proposal is compatible with allowed uses in the MUC zoning. It's compatible with neighboring similar land uses along Kaufman Street. For example, directly north of the site, there's another business called Car Works at 1406 Kaufman, which is another auto repair shop. There's Laura Tire Company just to the south and across Kaufman Street from us, Tire Sales and Service. And Victory Motors, which has their main facility on Main Street, also has another facility just south of us at 1330 Kaufman. So we're compatible with the neighboring land uses along Kaufman Street. And I think really importantly, we're also compatible with long-term goals of the city of Longmont for this mixed-use corridor. Next slide, please. So this is a vehicle repair and maintenance service, again, within 250 feet of a residential uses along West Kaufman Street. And in order to mitigate potential adverse impacts from that, we've agreed that there'll be no outdoor vehicle repair or maintenance activities. There'll be no outdoor storage or displays of vehicle equipment, unlicensed, inoperable or junk vehicles. And all activities that generate noise, odor, vibration, glare, or any other adverse impacts will all be conducted indoors. Moreover, we'll limit the hours of operation from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And the exterior lighting that we propose will all be directed inward and downward. So in general, we feel as though we're offering to the city a really fine new building that meets all the codes in this corridor. And we hope you would agree. Next slide, please. So with that said, we really appreciate your time. I know it's been a long night for you all, and we're willing to entertain any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Sorensen, Mr. Beggs and Ms. Rutledge. Thanks for your presentation. This is a public hearing item, and so I would like to open up the public hearing on this. So Susan, if we could put up our slide with our call-in information, thank you. If you want to speak about this project, now's the time to call in. Please call 1-888-788-0099. When prompted, enter the meeting ID 828-8365-3145. When we're ready to hear public comment, we'll call on you to speak based on the last three digits of your phone number. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record, and will be allowed five minutes to speak. Please remember to mute the live stream when you're called upon. We need five minutes to do this, so we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be back at about 10:15.
All right, Chair, I'm about to drop the slide. There you are.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and then give our live stream just a minute to get caught back up. And we have had no one call in.
Okay, thank you, Susan. So seeing no one being present for the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing part of this this item. And we will go to discussion and questions with the Commission. Anybody? Commissioner Boone. Oops, you're still muted.
Okay, my question is, there's not very much parking. I see five parking spots. Is that enough? You put the site plan up again. And will there be a parking impact to the neighborhood? Because you have to do street parking. I know street parking is allowed, but.
Sure. Sorry, Commissioner Boone. Actually, the city does not have minimum parking requirements for commercial businesses. That's in our land development code. We only have parking maximums. So we leave it up to each business owner applicant to determine what the right amount of parking is for them. They just can't exceed a certain amount. And in this case, oh, I'd have to go look at my code. I think it was 1, 250, one for every 200. I'll check the code right now, but at any rate, it didn't exceed the maximum allowable parking.
I can see that it doesn't exceed the maximum. My question, I guess, is to the applicant as to is there enough, or is there going to be parking all on the street?
So I'll take that one. It was determined with with the applicant and client that this amount of parking would meet their needs for the uses that were within the building.
You need to unmute. Commissioner Boone, did you have more to say?
No, I guess not. I guess not. There's not a minimum requirement. It just seems, it just seems to me like there's not enough, and that parking will impact the neighbors. Other than that, it's it's a very attractive building. Thank you.
Commissioner Boone.
Yeah, as a follow-up to that question, how many employees do they expect to have when all three of those buildings are occupied? Which would go a long way to deter or for us to help kind of get a feel for the parking spaces versus what's going to be used up and what, how many people organize to park out off on Kaufman?
I can, I can probably take that. I'm not sure. I know that the the owner will be in the Northern Bay with his automotive repair, and he has just himself and one other person. He's kind of a specialty automobile repair. He doesn't really work on normal cars. It's a, he works on race cars from the middle of the last century. His clients run them in rallies, so he does just a real specialty type of type of shop. In fact, his floors are so clean, you could fry an egg on them, and they'd be fine, unlike most auto repair shops. The other bay is yet to be leased. I think the the third one is currently, one of his tenants on the 1401 Main Street side is going to go down into there. And so they are already, you know, parking along the Main Street lot. They don't have, I don't know what their employee count is. But the parking stalls that we present were were designed in cooperation with the owner and the existing tenant. And with the prospective other tenant, we feel as though they don't really have a real high parking demand. It's not like a, you know, retail shop or something where you're going to have a lot of customers coming in, in and out all the time. The owner's shop is, you know, his customers come by maybe, you know, rarely, they'll drop a car off, he'll fix it, and they'll come and pick it up. So they don't have a lot of, a lot of customer or other traffic. And it's our understanding that the parking space we've provided is acceptable to the owner and to his prospective tenants. So that's where we are.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sorensen.
Commissioner, hey.
Thank you, Mr. Sorensen. I have a question regarding the subdivision of this property. Right now, it's one lot, is that correct?
Well, it's it's a couple of lots. There's the 1401 lot, the 1401 Main Street lot, which we're not really doing much on except for some maintenance improvements on the on the drainage and the concrete. And then there's the existing house that the owner currently lives in, which is addressed 1402 Kaufman. That's on the north corner. And so this larger lot was part of that original lot from that house. The garage, the existing garage was part of that that original house. So we're subdividing it into three lots. The existing house will maintain its, basically, its lot, the way it is now. It's going to be shortened a little bit on the south side of that lot. The 1401 Main Street side will become a separate lot.
Labeling the location of the water meter on the plan, putting a detail sheet for the handicap parking sign. Maintaining the sidewalk width, labeling items on the grading and drainage plan, those type of engineering items.
Commissioner, hey, if I can chime in, if you're using Adobe Acrobat as your PDF reader, you can open up the the comments panel. And you can see the text of all all the red line comments.
I will say the document wasn't flattened well. So in order to filter out all the ones that say AutoCAD in the comment box, you can just type in Fauks and then you'll see all of Cameron's comments in there.
Okay, because, yeah, I get a lot of comments, but it also says AutoCAD SXX sheet text note 12. I mean, like that.
And so I tried to summarize that on page three of the staff report. If you see the bullets there.
I understand. I just, it looked like the number of red lines were more than the bullets. Yeah, I guess I did. Appreciate that you had summarized it as such and that they are relatively minor in these bullet points. Thank you.
Commissioner Goldberg. Thanks, Chairman. I think this is a cool project. I think this is elevating the area. I think this is a creative use of the space. I appreciate that there aren't any real hurdles here. Landscaping, parking height, no variances needed there. Nope, it's been found to or projected to stay under any noise restrictions or noise limits. The light will need to be managed properly, but so does every property and project that we approve. The traffic impacts will be minimal. They're not doing real loud stuff like the bodywork and real messy stuff like bodywork and maintenance. And so I'm not really seeing a reason why we shouldn't approve this. It's seems like a good fit and really elevating the area.
Thanks, Commissioner Goldberg. I'll I'll chime in that I I really appreciate that the applicant did a a sound study to see what the effect would be on the apartments. And it looks from going through that and studying the diagrams on that, that that your consultant has determined that the sound emanating from the garage from the new building would be no louder than the ambient sound just emanating from Main Street. So but I really appreciate that that you provided us with the documentation to know that and to see that that's proven. I personally don't see any reason to say no to this project. I'm finding you know, I always ask myself, what are the reasons to say yes? What are the reasons to say no? And I see no reasons to say no. I do see a very nice building design. Thoughtfulness about the landscaping, like pulling that that extra sidewalk toward the building. The van accessibility, you know, you're dealing with with your ADA requirements in a thoughtful way. So let me just go ahead and make a motion to approve PZR 2021-8B, which includes the condition to to revise the drawings to meet the DRC comments. Any discussion or or a second to that motion? Commissioner Teta.
Yeah, I think it looks like a great project and I'd like to second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve PZR 2021-8B with a second from Commissioner Teta. More discussion, comments? Seeing none, let's take a roll call vote. Commissioner Teta?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Boone?
Yes.
Commissioner Oneron?
Yes.
Commissioner Height?
I.
And I will vote yes as well. So Jane, that passes unanimously seven to zero and now need to read this. This item now enters a seven day appeal period. During this time, any aggrieved party may appeal the commission's decision by submitting a written appeal letter stating why the planning and zoning commission's decision should be amended or reversed by city council. All appeals must be in writing and must be received in the city clerk's office and the planning office within the seven day appeal period, which begins on Thursday, August 19 at 8:00 a.m. and ends Wednesday, August 25 at 5:00 p.m. Thank you to the applicant and everybody on the team, Mr. Sorensen, Mr. Beggs and Ms. Rutledge. Thank you for sticking with us until 10:00 p.m. to present.
Thank you. Thank you back. We really appreciate your what you do and having sat here for the entire meeting, we I get a better sense of how difficult your job can be at times. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Sorensen. Take care and we will move on to our next agenda item. Let's let me get back to my script. Our next item is item 6C on our agenda, which is Scooter's Coffee Conditional Use Site Plan. Eva, could you step us through this one now, please?
I apologize. I thought I was unmuted and on camera. I apologize. I'll start that again. Eva Pejewski, Planning and Development Services. This is the Scooter's Coffee Conditionally Used Site Plan on Main Street. Next slide, please. Again, I'll just walk you through property location and some background. Again, this this parcel is part of the larger Horizon Park Shopping Center on the west side of Main Street, north of 21st. It has several commercial retail buildings, as you see in the white there, the white top rooftops are thrift store big lots and a number of other liquor store and some dollar store Murdochs and a King Supers up on the north end touching on to 23rd Avenue up there on the north. There's a Noodles and Co. right there, abutting Main Street, just north of where this project is. And of course, there's the UC Health Urgent Care Building that you're probably all familiar with at the northwest corner of Main and 21st. And so this project is in the parking lot of the shopping center. The UC Health building is actually on a separate parcel where the building is located. And this proposed coffee shop is in the parking lot north of UC Health in this Horizon Park Shopping Center. The total area is less than a third of an acre of where they're proposing to put in the coffee shop. And finally, the zoning is mixed use corridor. Next slide, please. And so the proposal is to as to in this parking lot area, I just north of the urgent care, they like to put in a very modest 565 square foot coffee kiosk with a drive through service. Drive throughs in the mixed use corridor require conditionally use approval, which is why we're here tonight. The development review team has evaluated this project against our development standards. And we can say at this time that no variances are being sought. They meet again, all of the development standards are with regard to landscaping, parking heights, setbacks, etc. These are the building elevations here on the right. The top one, as you can see there, that's the side facing Main Street. And then the one on the bottom is the order window, which is on the south facing side. And as you can see from the site plan where the red arrow is, there's Main Street there on the right or on the east side. So there's an entry point into the Horizon Park Shopping Center. Right now there's a curb cut with an entrance. And so customers could get in from Main Street through this driveway. Alternatively, if they wanted to, they could come in off of 21st Avenue just west of the urgent care. There's a driveway entry and they could come up in from there and come over to the project site here. And so the applicant left a two way driveway. If you look on the south, that is, and then just south of that, that's the urgent care property. So they left some room so that, as you can see, there's the urgent care parking lot. Customers and patients can still come in and out of that parking lot without being impacted by the coffee shop, which is just a little bit north of it. And so the drive through for the coffee would just be north of that two way driveway. So the applicant's proposing that entrance go in, going eastbound. And then you kind of go around a circle. There's an order window, obviously. And then you come around and on the north side right there where Susan's cursor is, that's where it's the pickup window. Actually, I believe that is the elevation you're seeing on the bottom of your screen. I'm sorry, that's the north facing elevation, right? There's also a bike rack, a couple parking stalls for the employees. And we'll get into that next, but there is no proposed walk up window for pedestrians. We've talked to the applicant about that. I think it wasn't in their business model when we initially requested that. And so let's go to the next slide. We'll talk about that a little bit further. So of course, we have our envisioned Longmont plan, but we also have a Main Street corridor plan. It's a sub area plan. It's sort of a plan that council adopted a couple of years ago with some more strategic planning for the Main Street corridor. And and so for this area where this property is located, it there's character areas and this is called the North Main Character Area for the purposes of this report. And so this property, it talks about 21st and Main being a potential transit stop area. And and one of the goals of the plan, it says, if feasible to have some small scale retail amenities, such as a coffee cart to serve riders for this transit area. And so we thought this would be a really good opportunity and we would be remiss as planners to ask for a walk up window. Because obviously, if you're using transit, you don't have the vehicle. Moreover, this would also serve patrons, patients and doctors of the urgent care immediately next door. Instead of having to get in their vehicle and drive through the coffee shop, they could actually walk over if there were a walk up window. Next slide, please. Again, so this is a conditionally used because of the drive through component. The coffee shop itself is a use by right, but the drive through is what brings us here tonight. And so again, similar to the previous project, we look through our performance and operational standards for conditionally uses. Had them put some notes on the cover page with restrictions on hours of operation and delivery areas. Those are on the cover page of the site plan. Additionally, staff is recommending a condition. And this can be at the commission's discretion to add a condition to revise that east facing building elevation, which faces Main Street to include a pedestrian oriented walk up window with a little crosswalk for safe way, excuse me, safety and pedestrian connectivity. And that would be in alignment with the Main Street corridor plan. Next slide, please. And just briefly, again, in terms of our community input, we had a neighborhood meeting in October of last year. Thousand foot notification. It was a virtual meeting because, of course, that was during the the COVID shutdowns. We didn't get any call ins at the neighborhood, the virtual neighborhood meeting with either questions or concerns. I then sent out a notice of application. An application was filed in November after the neighborhood meeting. Again, a large notification radius. I got one comment. It was from the manager of the apartment complex sort of to the north. They were expressing support that their residents could potentially use this coffee shop. And then lastly, we sent out another notice in August, August 3. Again, I did not receive any comments from anyone regarding this application. Next slide, please. And so staff is making a recommendation for conditional approval with the, again, that condition that they revise the building elevations for the pedestrian walk up window. And and this would be in alignment with the Main Street corridor plan, which would then meet the review criteria for approval. Next slide. And so with that, I think Chris Lee is here with Kenny Lee Architecture to do a brief presentation for the applicant. And then we're all happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. Mr. Lee?
Yes, thank you, Eva. And thank you, the rest of the commissioners here for sticking around and and listening to our presentation. We've got a little bitty building and kind of a small presentation here to to go with it. Eva has touched on many of the parts that we wanted to touch on as well. If you could get to the next slide, please. Just a quick summary. Mike and Megan are the owners. They're local to Longmont there and Mike's gonna have a few words here in a minute here as we get through the rest of this, but just as a quick summary, it's that 21st and Main Street, just north of that UC Health facility. It is, Mike and Megan are entering into a land lease agreement with the owners of the overall development over there. So they will just be utilizing part of the the land there. They will not own it and that will not be subdivided. It'll still be, still remain as as its own individual or it still remain as part of the overall whole property there. The intention is to infill kind of a an underlying underutilized part of the parking lot over there. If you've been by there lately, it's not utilized very much. I think most of the UC Health patrons are using the front of the building as well as some of the stuff to the west. And I expect some of our employees will also use some of the parking, the shared parking area to the west of our property there. Small little area. It's about two, just over a quarter of an acre there. Building is super small, about 550 square feet. We've got two access points, like Eva mentioned, two coming off of Main Street, one right directly adjacent to the north of our area and then one a little bit further north towards the King Supers. And then we've got two to the west and south off of 21st Ave. The intention, like Eva mentioned, the business model is as a
We didn't get any call-ins at the neighborhood, the virtual neighborhood meeting with either questions or concerns. I then sent out a notice of application. An application was filed in November after the neighborhood meeting. Again, large notification radius. I got one comment. It was from the manager of the apartment complex, sort of to the north. They were expressing support that their residents could potentially use this coffee shop. And then, lastly, we sent out another notice in August, August 3rd. Again, I did not receive any comments from anyone regarding this application. Next slide, please. And so, staff is making a recommendation for conditional approval with the, again, that condition that they revised the building elevations for the pedestrian walk-up window. And this would be in alignment with the Main Street corridor plan, which would then meet the review criteria for approval. Next slide. And so, with that, I think Chris Lee is here with Kenny Lee Architecture to do a brief presentation for the applicant, and then we're all happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ava. Mr. Lee?
Yes, thank you, Ava, and thank you, the rest of the commissioners here, for sticking around and and listening to our presentation. We've got a little bitty building and kind of a small presentation here to go with it. Ava has touched on many of the parts that we wanted to touch on as well. If you could get to the next slide, please. Just a quick summary. Mike and Megan are the owners. They're local to Longmont there. And Mike's gonna have a few words here in a minute here as we get through the rest of this. But just as a quick summary, it's that 21st and Main Street, just north of that UC Health facility. It is, Mike and Megan are entering into a land lease agreement with the owners of the overall development over there. So they will just be utilizing part of the land there. They will not own it, and that will not be subdivided. It'll still be, still remain as its own individual, or it still remain as part of the overall whole property there. The intention is to infill kind of a, an underutilized part of the parking lot over there. If you've been by there lately, it's not utilized very much. I think most of the UC Health patrons are using the front of the building, as well as some of the stuff to the west. And I expect some of our employees will also use some of the parking, the shared parking area to the west of our property there. Small little area. It's about two, just over a quarter of an acre there. Building is super small, about 550 square feet. We've got two access points, like Ava mentioned, two coming off of Main Street, one right directly adjacent to the north of our area, and then one a little bit further north towards the King Supers. And then we've got two to the west and south off of 21st Ave. The intention, like Ava mentioned, the business model is as vehicular drive-through. That's the way things work. The, as you noticed, the building is super small. And every, you know, a lot of times, we, we scope our buildings to make sure that every square foot is utilized efficiently. In this case, it's every square inch of this building is utilized efficiently. So Mike's gonna touch on that a little bit more here as to how and why the vehicular model works so well for them. We've got some of the hours there. These are operational hours is where we've got those noted. And like Ava mentioned, we've got delivery hours are usually more in the afternoons, when things are less busy during the time of the, the operations of the building. Typically, there's gonna be two to seven employees on site. Again, that's gonna be based on the hours and the type of rushes they might see during the different times of the day. You can go to the next slide, please. Again, more summaries here, but the red dot on the left just kind of shows overall big scale of where the, the new building is going to go. On the right side, you can see it again. It's taking up that small parking area that's just to the north of the UC Health facility. And like Ava mentioned, if you want to go to the next slide again, please, Susan. You can see here, we do have that two-way traffic. I also, traffic in and around the, the health facility is still maintained at all times. And we've just got that loop. We've worked closely with the city to maintain the proper number of cars in the stacking queue from the pickup window, which is on the very north end of the building, all the way around, back around to where the order window is, which is right where the, sort of the arrow at the end of the drive-through nomenclature is, yep, right there. That's where that order window or the order stand would be. So we've worked there to make sure we've got just enough cars in the queue to meet the requirements there. The landscaping, we've worked really, really closely with planning, too. We've got a couple of existing good mature trees that we are going to maintain and keep. And the, the health facility has done a really good job on their part of the property, kind of from our property's south, along Main Street, to really spruce up that area. So we're, we're kind of playing off some of those similar things. Get some nice turf grass planted up there, some good shrubbery and planter beds up there. And we've worked good and closely, again, right around the building and also out adjacent to, to the Main Street, to the private driveway to the north, to get the buffer yards and buffer yard requirements met, to keep, keep proper screening around everything. To the far west of the building, we've got a trash enclosure, and the, the architecture on the trash enclosure is going to match the architecture of the building as far as materials go. And if we want to go to the next one, please, you'll see the, the renderings of the buildings or the elevations of the buildings. But again, we have worked well with planning to make sure, like Ava mentioned, we had to make a few adjustments to avoid some variances. We've got plenty of blazing and awnings facing Main Street. We've also got blazing and awnings facing north and south to the adjacent properties there, too. But good undulation of building materials, good mixes of colors. We've got some good shapes and overall, good appeal to the building. And I think the next slide is just kind of a consideration. Thanks for your consideration. And I also would like to turn it over to Mike Snyder, and he's the, he will be the building owner and operation owner of the facility.
Thanks, Chris. Got a little bit of that there. Chris, is that your, okay, perfect. Now it sounds nice. Thank you, everyone, for, for the consideration. Just want to briefly introduce myself. My name's Mike Snyder. My wife Megan and I are the owners or the franchisees in Scooters Coffee. If you're not familiar with the brand, it's, it's absolutely wonderful, based out of Omaha, about 300 stores, mostly in the Midwest, but starting to grow in Colorado. This is our second location. The first is a little south of us in, in North Glenn. Despite owning that, opening that, February of last year, one month before shutdowns, we're, we're very happy to still be growing and, and also despite the labor market for the retail that we're in, more than half of our employees are still from our original crew when we, when we first opened. So very proud to be bringing the project here to, to Longmont where we live and bring it to our community. So just want to thank everyone for your consideration, sticking with us in the late evening here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Snyder. Commissioner, hey. No, okay, Commissioner Poland.
Yeah, given the fact that I think we're about ready to go to public comment, given that they'll take a little bit over five minutes, given that we're at 10:47, I would like to make a motion that we allow this meeting to go past 11:00 PM.
All righty, this is a little bit of housekeeping. We have a bylaw that says that we, we need to have a motion approved to go past 11:00 PM. Do I have a second, Commissioner Poland's motion? Commissioner, hey, you second?
I will second that, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to go past 11:00 PM. Because of our bylaws about our electronic meeting format, we need to do a roll call vote. So Commissioner Oneron?
Yes.
Commissioner Teta?
Yes.
Commissioner Haid?
Hi.
Commissioner Poland?
Hi.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Boone?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, too. So Jane, that passes unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you for always reminding me about that one little detail as we get toward the witching hour. So this is a public hearing item, so I would like to open the public hearing on this. And if you want to call in and talk about this particular project, now's the time to do it. Please call 1-888-788-0099. When prompted, enter the meeting ID 828-8365-3145. When we're ready to hear public comment, we will call on you to speak based on the last three digits of your phone number. Each speaker must state their name and address for, for the record, and will be allowed five minutes to speak. Please remember to mute the live stream when you're called upon. And we will take a five-minute break in order to get people in, into the queue. So we will meet back at 10:54. Thanks.
All right, Chair, I just dropped the slide, and we'll wait for the live stream to get caught up.
Okay. Thank you, Susan.
All right, looks like our live stream is caught up, and we have no one that has called in.
Okay, well, seeing that we have no callers for the public hearing, we will close the public hearing of this item. And we will move on with comments and discussion. Commissioner Haid?
Hello, yeah, I had raised my hand earlier, mistakenly forgetting that we had a public hearing, and the public was invited to speak. Now that the public's out here, Mr. Snyder, Mr. Lee. I didn't know, Mr. Lee, if you could put back about your presentation, the, the view from the drive-through, looking at the drive-through, it would be ostensibly the, the west elevation. No, no, further, 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 one more there. That one, back up with the car. Yes. So I noticed that this elevation doesn't show up on your concept plan. And as I think, if this is your building, this would be what I, what I presume to be the west elevation. Is that correct?
This, this actually is a mirror of what we're doing. So our pickup window would be on the opposite side of the building. So just taking the mirror of this one over. So what's, what's facing us would face Main Street. What's where the car is sitting right now would actually be on the north side of the building.
Okay, we're headed backwards. Do you have that window in the front under that awning? Could that be?
That, that does show up, yeah. So if you go two or three, or go back a slide, Susan, it's the one in the top left corner.
Oh, that's that awning with windows, okay.
Yep, that's the one that's facing Main Street.
And so, staff has recommended that possibly you have a walk-up window. And you did comment that every possible square inch of your 500-square-foot building is put to, to, to good use. Is there somewhere you can sandwich in a walk-up window?
I'm gonna defer a little bit to Mike on that one, because he's operating the one he's got, like he said, in the other location, to see how that would work. But I know there's a, there's a counter underneath that, that window now that is used in operations. Mike, what do you think?
Yeah, Commissioner Haid, I appreciate the question, and Ava, appreciate the heads up. And thanks to everyone for letting us go a little bit over here. It, it would be a big, it would be a significant change to the interior of how we manage the bar and, and, and serve drinks and everything, to turn that into a walk-up window. Not only is it taking away space for us to, you know, create drinks and have our coffee machines, but it also would require us to have a second point-of-sale system. So it, that went with the building of our size. It actually is a pretty substantial impact. We did take it back to our team. We, we looked at it. We reviewed the, the North Main Character Area description, the corridor plan. And with the size of the plot and the fact that the drive-through lane wraps all the way around the front area there, we just couldn't find a way to internally, you know, despite internally, you know, modifying the building and the way we, we set up our operations, but also externally, just being able to add it and comfortably do that from a safety perspective, was, was the team's, you know, overall feedback on it.
That was my next question. I was presuming that you probably wouldn't be able to do it internally. But externally, could you make your drive-up window also accommodate a walk-up patron? I'll admit that I've done it to other walk-up, other drive-up coffee joints, just walked up to it. But not when it's busy. Is there a way to, to do that safely, or no?
So it would not, it would certainly not be prudent during a rush hour in the early morning. Our existing store in North Glenn, we do have some patrons that will walk up. Typically, those will be in the afternoon. Employees of nearby retail will walk over. But that's almost always during time where there's just no one else in line. So we'll serve, we serve individuals in that scenario, but we, to be honest, we prefer not to, especially because during busy hours, it can be really, one, it's unsafe, and then, two, it can be confusing in terms of between a car and individuals walking up who has the, the right of way.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Yeah, excuse me. Thanks, Mr. Snyder. Appreciate you bringing this project to us. I think I just wanted to continue off of Commissioner Haid's line of questioning. I mean, high level, it's very charming. If it's in our town, it meets, you know, our goals for this area, you know, for this part of the city. There's a need for it, a desire for it, and we're excited to help you get there. Of course, we take, you know, I, let me speak for myself. I take city staff's recommendations pretty seriously. So the, the recommendation from city staff at this moment is that we make this walk-up window a condition of approval. I guess I just want to be 100% clear. Based on, I think, how you responded to Commissioner Haid's questions, if we approve this as recommended by the city, does that put the brakes on this? Does this become no longer feasible for you?
I would, I would say, Commissioner Goldberg, that's a very real possibility.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you.
Well, shoot, did I guess that puts the onus back on us and staff to, you know, consider, is it our job to mandate of, you know, the business be operated in this capacity? You know, can we require the addition of this walk-up window? Is that a deal breaker for us? I appreciate the North Main Character Vision, the North Main Character Area, and the recommendations from city council to provide a pedestrian-oriented service and where feasible, encourage or enable or support walk-up or pedestrian-friendly businesses. But, yeah, I think I'm gonna have to turn to my peers for some, just discussion on how big of a deal is this for us? And is this, you know, is this where we need to, like, draw the line or not?
Commissioner Oneron?
I agree with Commissioner Goldberg. And there are reasons why this is a conditional use in this particular zone. And I have my reasons, but I'd like to hear from Ava. What is the justification?
Chair Sharnak, Commissioner Oneron, the justification, you mean, for the condition?
Yeah, condition, and why this is a conditional use in this particular, I mean, this particular part of the corridor is very car-oriented. The parkings are all on the front, et cetera, so forth. And I, I mean, I assume the reasoning behind it is to turn that around. That is to say, make it much more pedestrian-oriented. Am I right with that? I mean, why this particular, I mean, why drive throughs in this particular zone are conditional?
Commissioner Onera, I'm not sure, I'm going to defer to Don Burchett, as he was part of the Land Development Code Update Team. I know our consultant Clarion Associates worked with our team, so I'll defer to Don on that question. But in terms of why are we asking for this condition? Again, when we look at the review criteria for approval, one of the review criteria says that you need to be consistent and in alignment with our long range planning goals. Yes, we primarily talk about the Envision Longmont Comprehensive Plan, but it also means in alignment with other sub area plans, like a Main Street plan, which, which really ties in with the Envision Longmont Plan, and so in the Main Street Corridor Plan, it talks about setting up a transit area, it talks about revitalizing underutilized parking areas, improving the Main Street facade, and so we felt like this was an opportunity for us to capitalize on that, and that's why we asked for the condition. But I will defer to Don or Glenn who want to talk about why drive throughs specifically are conditional uses in the mixed use corridor.
The reason I'm asking this, the only reason why this is in front of us is because it's a conditional use. And therefore, we need to know what makes it so, so that we can make a decision.
Chairman Schirnack, members of the commission, Don Burchett, Planning Manager. You know, the the goal for the area when, as I understood it from the plan that was done for the Main Street plan, and when we looked at Envision Longmont as well as with the code updates, was that we knew that we had some areas that were definitely developed. I, I would like to say a long time ago, but unfortunately, some of that was developed when I started here, the city, as really auto dominated kind of development. The look that we did with Envision and with some of the Main Street Corridor Plan was trying to identify areas for redevelopment where we could increase additional density and try to create mixed uses, you know, true mixed uses, not only horizontally but vertically mixed uses. And in order to try to encourage some of those, we did look at trying to determine how additional auto oriented kind of uses would have an impact on these areas if they came in and wanted to develop properties. So in the mixed use commercial zone, this is one of those areas where this kind of a use is identified as a conditional use. It doesn't mean that it's not an appropriate use to go in. And the commission can make a finding that this location is an okay place for it to go in and that the need to provide this walk up window is not necessary. But again, when Ava and we were looking at this, trying to look at the code requirements and look at the intent of the plan to try to encourage that ability for people to walk within the district to be able to get services. That was one of the things that, at least as, as our look at this proposed use was something that we felt to be beneficial to the area by having the ability for those people that work at the medical center, for example, to be able to walk, you know, out of their building, across the parking lot and up to a window and order a coffee and walk back without having to get in a car in the parking lot, drive through the parking lot, drive through an area in order. I, I totally understand that this coffees, the way that they're designed does not allow for that kind of, 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 of a person to come up there, and I understand the safety concerns. You know, there are other designs that we have seen where people have allowed for windows, they have windows that you can actually walk up to that are separate from the drive through areas and in that area that Commissioner Height was talking about on the front of the building. But again, if, if they've looked at it and they don't believe that they can accommodate it, I think the commission just needs to consider, consider really what their business model is and make a decision of whether or not this is truly something that should be approved, you know, for this, for this area. But, you know, again, it, it was trying to achieve the intent of the Envision Longmont and the Main Street Corridor Plans by trying to encourage mixing of uses and walkable areas versus just auto dominated areas. That's working.
Any follow on, Commissioner?
Yeah. You know, let me lower my hand. In the previous application, the reason why that permitted use was in front of us was the proximity to the residential uses. And then the question we asked, what's the impact? And then we were convinced that the impacts were really mitigated and taken care of, therefore we felt good. Here, the impact is making it much more car oriented. And there is a solution there, it's a walk up window. And that would mitigate, and personally, I feel much more comfortable with that solution, even though I understand the difficulties and such. I mean, I really liked the coffee hours, I really liked the drive throughs, I, you know, especially during the COVID, proved to be that it's really important to have a drive through option as well, because you don't want to walk into a coffee house, you couldn't anyway. So I understand all that, but I'm kind of, you know, I mean, if I say no to the condition, that negates the reason why this is a conditional use and what we're trying to achieve in that whole corridor. That's my personal opinion.
I saw somebody else's hand up, was it Commissioner Pollan? Yeah, I think it was Commissioner Pollan first and then Commissioner.
No, I think it was Commissioner Height first.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Height.
Thank you, Commissioner Pollan. So, Commissioner, okay, I kind of, I don't, and I, I hear what you're saying and I agree with what you're saying, that, that as, you know, Director Brigitte just explained to us, you know, it's conditional use, and we take a look at it to make sure that possibly we de-emphasize the driving aspect of, of what this corridor portion looks like right now. I'm familiar with that area because I office near there, and from what I know of it, you know, it's a big parking lot, it has a, a gas station in it, it has a supermarket in it and an arc and some other areas where those people are going to be driving, they're not going to be getting out of their cars to walk up to this place. The traffic on Main Street and 21st is heavily, it's, it's, it's driven, it's not walked. A, a transportation hub might come in there, that might change that, but right now, it's all driving. And my supposition is going to be the medical professionals in that, that urgent care facility are going to do what I would probably do, which is walk up anyhow. And, and, you know, don't, that is the, the target audience for a walk up, and, and it would serve them greatly, but they're probably smart enough to know better, but are going to do it anyhow, they're going to walk up anyhow. And from what I hear from Mr. Snyder is that, you know, without redesigning and changing his 500 square foot building into a 600 square foot building and changing the, the, the system that he's working with, it's not going to work, so I appreciate the, the thought of imposing this condition, but I'm not going to support it. Thanks.
Commissioner Pollan.
Mr. Snyder, so this is a franchise. Is this basically a cookie cutter building that they sell to every franchise?
So this does fit a prototype. It is one of the, it's the second to most recent prototype based upon when we originally submitted. And, and my understanding, we've got Alex on the line here from Scooters, but there are no prototypes that have walk up windows.
Yeah, hi, good evening, everybody, this is, I'm a construction manager for Scooters Coffee, also do pre-development work for, for the company. This is the second to most recent prototype, but I'll tell you, the most recent prototype also is drive through only. You know, the, the, the company has just determined that that's our business model, and as you can, as you, you know, figured out, there's, there's really no room inside of this, this building, we would have to completely rearrange the, the configuration to add a, a walk up window, so, and we basically stay away from, you know, the, the brand way back before I was ever involved with it, did have what we call coffee houses, but for business reasons, we moved away from that and exclusively build drive through kiosks like this.
Hey, thank you for that, and Mr. Snyder, I do have a, a second question. On the south end of your property, between you and the urgent care, it shows there are lanes that go east and west, and then you have your drive through lane. So it goes east, it goes west, you have your drive through lane going back east again. And I'm just wondering, is there anything that divides your drive through lane through that west lane? Or is it just basically marked by lane paint?
Chris, I, I believe that is paint, is that correct?
I'm trying to confirm that now, I can't remember if it was painter, if it was a six inch curb, I think we decided it was paint because we were concerned about snow removal. And if it were a six inch curb, it would be lost in the snow, and if we've got differing snow removal companies coming to take care of snow, it was going to be a problem, so it is just paint.
Okay, but there is, so there is any paint though, to denote.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that dark, dark black line there would be, would be a parking lot striping.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Commissioner Teta.
So I, I guess I'd like to echo Commissioner Height's sentiment about the, the drive up and the, the auto intense area that this is in, but I, I would be supportive of trying to impose that condition if everybody felt like it was imperative. But I don't really feel like the purpose of this being a conditional use of a drive through being a conditional use is for us to be able to impose these kind of additional can, expectations on a business. That's it.
I have a couple of questions, Ava, question for you. So this corner is intended to be a transportation hub at some point. What's the timeline looking like on that?
I'm going to defer to Don or Glenn on that, I didn't work on the Main Street Corridor Plan and we don't have Aaron here tonight.
Okay.
I'm going to ask Don, I know it's, it's quite a ways out, it's certainly our goal to have a bus rapid transit. And yeah, the plan calls out enhanced, enhanced transit center here. But whether it's in three years, five years, 10 years, I don't know.
I have no clue, I can text Mr. Greenwald if he's still awake and see if I could get that information for you, but I have no idea. Chris Huffer turned on his, so maybe Chris has some ideas for us.
Chairman and Commissioners, Chris Huffer with Public Works. I have some very little idea. I know that, that in our five year CIP, we have identified for a great separated crossing at 21st and Main to start that design and most likely have construction in 2023, which would be kind of a piecemeal towards this, this transportation hub. We do not have any of the other improvements identified in the next five years for that area for Main Street or for the surrounding area. But it, it most likely fall within like a 10 year timeframe for full build out of that.
Okay, thank you, um, so hearing all of that, it makes me think that there's lots of time for Mr. Snyder to discover how many people are going to be like Commissioner Height and walking up, up to his window. And if there are a lot, he can come up with a different operational way to handle that. He might, you know, I've seen more and more drive throughs where, where there are staff standing out at the order, the order sign. You know, there's, there's a multitude of ways in which Mr. Snyder could be creative with his business if there were enough people walking up to his window. I frankly was surprised to see city staff suggesting that we enter into a condition that affects a business person's operations of, of their business. I, I don't think I've seen us do that before, our, 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 our conditions are usually about things like, you know, fenestration and, and setbacks and, and, and expecting, you know, noise constraints, not, not telling somebody how to operate their business. So I'm, I'm not really sanguine about placing a condition on somebody who has made it very clear that this is outside of his, his, his business model. Ava, I have a, I do have a, a more technical question, it's about the photometric plan. Changing gears just a little bit, okay, I'm looking at the photometric plan drawing. Remind me, what is our standard as to what the, the, the foot candles are supposed to be at the property line? Was it zero or was it point one or one?
For Schirnack, it's, it's actually point one, it's not zero.
Okay, so it's point one, so on their photometric plan though, if you look at some of the numbers that I assume are indicating the property line on the north and on the west, they're exceeding point one. But how do we deal with that when they're putting a building in the middle of a parking lot that was designed a long time ago and, and, I mean, is that light infiltration coming from just the ambient light elsewhere in the parking lot? I mean, can we even apply the point one foot candle requirement?
Not really, yeah, because this is all, the, the Scooters development is not on a separate parcel, it's part of the Horizon Park Shopping Center, so then it includes all of the parking lot lighting for the entire Horizon Park Shopping Center.
Okay, so, so that's why, why this didn't come up as an issue with staff reviews is because in effect that, that point one foot candle at the property line doesn't, doesn't apply.
Right, and also, I believe, I'm trying to pull it up as quickly as I can on my computer, but I believe that drive through businesses, I know gas stations are allowed a larger allowance on foot candles, so. But I know we evaluated against the lighting code when we did the review.
Okay, um, thanks Ava, thanks for that, I'll throw out a, a thought to the other commissioners. So we've got this huge parking lot, right, and, and so the applicant is saying, I'm going to put a scooter is right here next to this urgent care building. If they had been proposing and put the, the scooters like in the middle of the parking lot, would we be talking about a conditional use to provide a walk up window when everybody had to cross a huge amount of parking to get to that walk up window? Is, is the suggestion for the walk up window only because of its proximity to the urgent care building? I mean, this, to me, if, if we weren't, if the idea of a walk-up window makes sense, it should make sense no matter where this thing is located. But it doesn't make sense if the thing is located in the right smack in the middle of this huge sea of asphalt. Not in my opinion. Commissioner Pullen.
I think in the short term, you're right. I think in the long term, the city is thinking that there's going to be a transportation center in this area. So in five or 10 years, it would be nice to have a coffee shop that people could walk up to. I think that's their long-term goal. My personal opinion is, I think the same as what you had stated. I do not believe that we should make a condition that makes an additional, additional thing to their business plan. Their business plan is for drive-through. Now, truthfully, if I was going by there and I wanted coffee, I mean, if I worked at the urgent care, I would probably go through the drive-through and then go into, into work. I mean, I would probably get it on my way into work. I would also maybe if I had a break, take a look and say, oh, there's nobody in the drive-through and I would probably walk up and get it. Now, for people who bike, if you're a bicyclist, I don't know, do bicyclists go up through drive-throughs and wait in drive-through lines? I mean, that's a little different than somebody walking. I mean, I have seen bicycles get behind cars in traffic. So I could see a bicycle easily, more easily going through the drive-through than at that case. Maybe somebody going to work on his bicycle and say, hey, I'm just going to wait in line and follow the cars. And I do that in traffic anyway. So I do not believe that we should put that kind of condition on this business. That, that's my thought. And you're on mute. Yes.
Commissioner Oron.
Well, Commissioner Height and Teta convinced me that, you know, we shouldn't impose a condition on this particular case. That being said, in principle, I'd like to challenge a couple of things. What is that? When we ask fenestration, setback, noise control, we should tell them what to run their businesses. When you reduce this, you know, noise, certain businesses cannot function. We do that knowing that we're going to change the formation of the business. When we ask them to provide windows where they don't want to provide windows, yes, they, whole thing changes inside. And I don't see, you know, this is to say that I completely understand why the city is coming with this particular condition. But, you know, it's such a cute building. And I'm asking myself, that is to say, what does this building do to the pedestrian? And to the corridor? Well, there's the building presence, even though it's small, it has a presence and it's very visible from the sidewalk and that creates an ambiance. So it's different than being in the middle of the parking lot. It's close to the sidewalk, which is a plus, which makes me more comfortable about saying yes to it. I wish there was a pedestrian access. I wish there was an accommodation for people on the sidewalk to do something about it. But still, the positives are high. So that's why I'm supporting with no condition.
Just to reply to your point about asking for more fenestration and it can totally change how operations inside a building work. Yes, absolutely. But in cases where that building is a spec building and, and they don't yet have a tenant, I'm much more willing to condition them for that in order to, you know, get the kind of fenestration we want, especially when it faces a residential area. So just an aside there.
Commissioner Pullen.
Yeah, also, I'd like to also point out from a technology standpoint, and maybe they don't have this now, but you know, people do go online to put in orders. And, you know, we talked about this briefly before somebody mentioned it. It's not out of the thing that, because hey, look, we're getting a lot of walk-up traffic from UC Health. You know what? Let's put in an online order and have somebody who has a remote, one of those remote things to go in, take out the order to them. I mean, I think this will be, if there's enough business for it, there's an easy solution where they don't, they can do it without even changing the building. That if, if, if there isn't that much kind of need, that they can make a solution for it without changing the building down the road. So.
Commissioner Goldberg, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I've, I have valued this conversation by the commission. I think at least several of us are aligned where we're going here and maybe all of us. I'm kind of winking at Commissioner Height on that one. You know, the reason why this is here today is because of the drive-through and the drive-through is the, is what requires us to meet. And I think we all agree that the drive-through fits here. Excuse me. I don't think that we are in the habit of putting you on very many conditions that impact operations. I think it's something that we do very rarely and very cautiously. And with, you know, kind of great discussion before proceeding. And I just don't think this one fits that bill. I don't. I love the intent that city council and staff and teams, and I think there was buy-in from community as well, have, I love the vision for starting to create these districts along the Main Street corridor and giving them identity and purpose in serving our community. But I think this is going to serve our community great. Yes, I think there's other competitors in the area that have found a way, other coffee little islands that have found a way to incorporate the walk-up window. And if that is a differentiator, you know, excuse me, that's a differentiator, or Mr. Snyder determines that that's, you know, an attribute to his store that he wants to apply at a later time. I think that'd be great. And he has, sounds like he has the support of city council and other folks to encourage him to do that. But it shouldn't be what makes or breaks this deal. So I think with that said, I'm inclined to move forward with recommending that we approve the Scooters Coffee Conditional Use Site Plan application, finding that the review criteria has been met as reflected in PZR 2021-9A. And I just want to make sure Ava, there wasn't any other conditions listed besides the walk-up order window? On your, on your recommendation for B, was it only the walk-up window? Or were there other like outstanding items that needed to be resolved?
Oh, that's correct.
Cool. Okay. Well, then I'm going to stick with my recommendation that we approve the Scooters Coffee Conditional Use Site Plan application, finding that it meets the review criteria as reflected in PZR 2021-9A.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve PZR 2021-9A. Commissioner Pullen?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Pullen. Do we have further discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Commissioner Oron. Commissioner Pullen?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Height?
I.
Commissioner Boone?
Yes.
Commissioner Teta?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. So that passes unanimously seven to zero. Let me read my announcement. This item now enters a seven-day appeal period. During this time, any aggrieved party may appeal the commission's decision by submitting a written appeal letter stating why the planning and zoning commission's decision should be amended or reversed by city council. All appeals must be in writing and must be received in the city clerk's office and the planning office within the seven-day appeal period, which begins Thursday, August 19th at 8:00 a.m. and ends Wednesday, August 25th at 5:00 p.m. Mr. Snyder and Mr. Lee, Mr., I didn't get, catch your last name, cannot believe. Close? Yeah. Okay. Thank you all for, for sticking with us all the way till 11:30 tonight. Appreciate your, your presenting to us. Good luck with your project. We have more on our agenda, so we're going to continue on with a few more things. Okay, we have our final call for the public to call in. So Susan, we need to put the slide up. And if you want to call in and make any comments about something that was not on the agenda, that was not a, a project on the agenda tonight, now's the time to do it. Please call 1-888-788-0099. When prompted, enter the meeting ID 828-8365-3145. When we're ready to hear public comment, we will call on you to speak based on the last three digits of your phone number. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record and will be allowed to five minutes to speak. Please remember to mute the live stream when you are called upon to speak. To do this, we often give five minutes given the hour of the evening. I'm going to check in with Susan at three minutes. But we might, might use a whole five minutes. So I'll be back in about three minutes.
Chair, we actually have one caller. If you want, we're at about four minutes here. I'll go ahead and stop sharing and we'll wait for the live stream to get cut up. All right, looks like our live stream is caught up. And when the commissioners are back on screen, I can take the first caller.
And looks like we're waiting. There she is. Okay, Commissioner Boone's here. I think we're all here, Susan.
All right. The one and only caller that we have tonight, your phone number ends in 949. I'm going to ask you to unmute. Are you there? There you are.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Ruby Bowman, 1512 Left Hand Drive. I would like to know if the Planning and Zoning Commission has a policy regarding conflicts of interest. Say for instance, a commissioner participated in a public hearing discussion and cast a vote for a project, even though the project developer was a client of the commissioner. Isn't this, isn't this a considered a conflict of interest? And shouldn't the commissioner have recused himself or herself? And when is a commissioner required to recuse him or herself? Please, I would like a copy of your conflict of interest policy so I can better understand what is considered a violation. Will you please have staff forward, forward me a copy of the policy? Thank you so much.
Thanks for the comment. So assuming you're still watching, we have an agenda item in just a moment where we can have a discussion amongst ourselves. And city attorney Teresa Tate is still here and I'll make a point of, of asking that question of her. Let me get back to my agenda. Yes, items from the commission next on our agenda. First off, huge, huge thank you to Jane and to Susan. This was a huge cast of characters, you know, who we had to pull into the meeting tonight. I think we, we set a record about 33 people started off the meeting. So thank you very much for everything you've done tonight. City Attorney Tate, we just heard Ms. Bowman's questions about conflicts of interest. When should commissioners recuse themselves as compared to when can commissioners disclose something but still serve? Could you enlighten us all as to city policy on that?
Yes, absolutely. So a conflict of interest is the individuals to determine. So no one else can determine whether someone has a conflict of interest. Only that individual can determine that. Here, Commissioner Oron disclosed that he had a client that he was working with who was on a matter in front of the commission. He also disclosed that he had, did not have any foreknowledge of this, this matter. Presumably Commissioner Oron, in that disclosure, was telling the commission and, and the community that he did not believe. Perhaps I'll say it a different way, that Commissioner Oron was, was saying that he believed he could be unbiased in the decision. And that is for him to determine and only him to determine. And so he fully disclosed a conflict, which is exactly city policy that we do that. And only he can decide whether or not he needs to recuse. So in this situation, Commissioner Oron followed the city policy and was compliant with it.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. City Attorney Tate, I know that I have communicated with you and other city attorneys in the past to determine whether my potential conflict, you know, you've, you've advised me just how much of a conflict do I have? And, and then you left that decision to me. So just for Ms. Bowman and, and those who are watching, I know that, that I myself have, have consulted with the city attorneys to ensure that I'm complying. I believe, you know, from knowing other commissioners that they have done so as well. And
Any commissioner may do so at any time. And part of the role of, of the, the office, part of my role is to advise you as a commission and to advise you individually as commissioners.
Okay. Commissioner Oron, thank you, Teresa. Commissioner Oneron, thank you, Teresa. Appreciate that.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to apologize for everybody for the confusion in the beginning of the meeting that, you know, wasted some time. I don't know how it happened, but somehow I started the live stream. And that created a weak echo and so I apologize. In terms of the conflict of interest, I, like City Attorney Tate mentioned, if I didn't believe that I would vote on this in a very neutral, non-affected way by my client, I wouldn't join the meeting. My thoughts about what's going on in the river corridor developed pretty early in 2010 with my students, we did a studio looking at the policies of the whole corridor and we did a presentation of the council there. So since then, I've been really following very closely all the policies proposed to the whole corridor. And, you know, as a citizen of this city, I care for those policies. So be even before I met my client, I had very good idea of what is appropriate and what is not appropriate and what is in the comprehensive plan and how I interpret those. So my ideas did not develop because of my clients at all, because of this application at all. It has been evolved through time slowly. And I have a very strong understanding of the long-term benefits of Longmont and the whole region. Actually, Longmont is not just one city. It's a part of a metropolitan area and we depend on each other in the general system. And, you know, my ideas about what's the right land use, what's the right density has been, have been evolving for a long time. It didn't happen just overnight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Oneron. Appreciate that. Commissioner Paulin?
Yes. First of all, thank you, Commissioner Oneron. That was, thank you for your explanation. I just want to make sure that there, if there's any follow-up needed, and if so, we have somebody who will be taking care of that. Glenn, Teresa, do we owe Ruby a follow-up? And if so, who would be responsible for that? I just want to make sure we cover the bases on this.
Yeah, yes, I, I'll take that question. Commissioner Paulin, as I understand it, Ms. Bowman asked for a copy of the city's policy. Under the law, that is an open records request. It doesn't have to come in in any specific way. Therefore, the city will treat it as an open records request and will provide Ms. Bowman any policy that the city has on conflict of interest. That can be found in the city code, in the city municipal code, but we're very happy to provide that to her.
Great. Thank you so much. Commissioner Goldberg?
Thanks, Chairman. Yeah, just to push the meeting five minutes longer and to really contribute nothing of value. I just thought I would stand up for the group of us that report here month after month. I just think when I go to bed at night after these meetings and I think about, have we served our town? Have we served our city, you know, and tried to move the needle towards good? While we don't always agree, I do know that integrity and credibility is at the foundation of why we show up. So, you know, I just think I'm proud of the work that we do. And I know that we're all in it for good. And integrity is something that we really stand behind. And so I hope we model that for our residents and neighbors that we serve, whether it's Ruby Bowman or, or others. So you know, more of a token to the other images on the screen, saying thank you for, I think what we do is provide, you know, a real good service in the neighborhood.
Thanks, Commissioner Goldberg. Commissioner Teta?
On another note, I think now that we've dealt with this secondary use in the MUE district two months in a row, I think it'd be appropriate that we at least consider whether with or without staff and some kind of a, an amendment, maybe to code. Try to clarify that. I just see us visiting that again and again.
Okay. Glenn?
Just what I say to be clear, last month it was MUR, this month it's MUE.
Thank you.
Okay. Glenn, and in, in given the expressed interest in, in looking at how, how code might be adjusted so that we have more clarity on, on those district level versus lot level zoning decisions. Would it be possible for maybe you and Don or whoever is appropriate to kind of figure out a, a way for us to kind of find our way through this? I mean, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's a working session or, or something like that.
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest is, yeah, we just have an open discussion, have an opportunity to look at all different alternatives and see is, is there a better way to do it? I think we'd be open to that.
Um, what, what could help too? And I, and I think it would be good if, if we invited all the alternates as well, because they have, have a good insight to these issues. But it would, would help, I, I think for there to be maybe no more than a page of some bullet points that kind of summarize the issues that are, are, are coming up on not necessarily pros and cons, but you know, like, well, on the one hand, we've got we've got a way to look at things by district. There's, there's things that, that, that come from that and problems that come from that. And on the other hand, we can look at it by, by a lot. So it, it just might be a way for all of us to focus our, our thoughts in a working session and, and also to kind of inform those who've not been at the meetings.
Yeah, and I think at this point anyhow, I don't believe we have any regular business for your next meeting. Perhaps if you want to take the night off, I understand. But if you want to have a, a study session on this issue, I, I think we can put that together.
Okay. Thanks, Glenn. Teresa?
My, my impression is that Commissioner Height could be a valuable resource here in, in providing a perspective. And he, if he would be so willing, I think that it would be really helpful to staff and this attorney, if, if he was willing to provide a list and some recommendations from his perspective.
Yeah, I was going to say I have a list that I'm more than happy to share.
Oh, we know you do.
Yeah, and, and, and I think, I think that'd be great. You know, so Commissioner Height's list, you know, Glenn wrote an email expressing some of the city staff point of view that I was privy to. And yeah, we could put that together and then we can have a discussion about it and see what comes of that. Okay. Seeing some thumbs up and some nodding and I don't think you're nodding off per se, but let's, let's finish our agenda here. So items from Council Representative Aaron Rodriguez, but he's not in attendance, so we'll skip that. Any items from the Planning and Development Services Director Glenn Van Morgen?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I was, you probably read, we got some initial census numbers last week. We've just got the basic population number for April 1, 2020. And some of the demographic information, but certainly not the full load. So we are waiting for that and we did talk to the commission some time ago about doing a full presentation of what the census data is showing us and comparing it to some of our goals and see if it's, if they're in alignment. So we are planning that for October. It also happens to be planning month, which I know you all have on your calendar. So we thought the timing would be really good. And I'll just have a shout out to Erin and her crew in December, last December, 2020, she estimated our population at being 99,000 and she left it at that, kind of hedged her bets a little bit. The April 1, 2020 census number is officially 98,885. So if you prorate that to December, it was almost smack dab on it. So I think I estimated she was off 0.07 of 1%. So not bad. But that's all I have, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. And again, thank you. Definitely echo. It's, it's a tough job and we appreciate all your time.
Thank you, Glenn. And I'll, I'll tell you, I'm planning on planning month. Okay.
Awesome.
All right, with that in mind, unless I see anybody waving their hand saying no, we'll adjourn. All right. Take care, everybody. Thank you.
Night.